Good evening. Will our members and guests please take their seats? We're about to get started, albeit three minutes late, which is giving me hives. Okay, good evening. My name is Alexis Vulgaras, RTM moderator. And as all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. This evening, I have asked Ali Giorci of District One to lead us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Giorci is one of our RTM liaisons to the Selectmen Sustainability Committee. And I think I had mentioned a couple of months ago that as we have these wonderful RTM liaisons, it would be nice for them to come before us periodically and update us on the work of their committee. So Ms. Giorci is going to do that with her committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. I'm Ali Giorci, District One, Land Use Alternate and the Greenwich Sustainability Committee Food Systems Sector Chair. Although my charge is to provide you with an update on Greenwich Sustainability Committee, since this is my first time before you, I'd like to take a few minutes and introduce the committee and provide some context on who we are and our purpose. We were convened by First Selectman Fred Camello in 2020. Our co-chairs, Selectwoman Janet Stone-McWigan and Environmental Affairs Department Director Beth Evans, lead a dynamic committee of thoughtfully engaged residents, as well as leaders of local nonprofits and town departments. Greenwich Sustainability Committee members are committed to fostering sustainable practice and well-being for future generations and our natural ecosystems. We acknowledge the decades of work by our predecessors and see our efforts on a continuum of environmental stewardship. Prior to 2020, other than an annual conservation gathering, there wasn't an organized entity that brought stakeholders together on a regular basis. We are organized by sector: business, climate resiliency, community culture, food systems, land and water, legislation and advocacy, transportation and air quality, waste reduction, and youth engagement. Although we work closely with EMAC, we are separate entities. Each sector has one or two chairs, and the majority of us are founding members. We encourage you to visit our website on the Town of Greenwich, or our webpage on the Town of Greenwich website, where you can read our Statement of Purpose, our guiding principles, our vision statement, and an annual State of Sustainability reports. Sign up for our monthly newsletter, which is organized by our colleague Maya Cockland-Leckenbrink, and see the list of sector shares. We welcome your participation. We meet the first Thursday of the month from 11 till 12:30. All meetings are public, and of course, all are welcome. We are designed to demonstrate the interconnectedness of sectors and provide a space for sectors to leverage each other's networks and expertise, share best practices, and foster collaboration. Sustainability initiatives are evolving beyond land conservation and natural habitat protection to include sea level rise preparedness, heat island mitigation, responsible waste and resource management, safe active transportation corridors, biodiversity protection, and food system resiliency. These are just a few of the unprecedented, extremely costly, forbidding challenges before us, not only as town residents that depend on natural resources, but as the town's fiscal legislative body. In order for us to address these challenges, it is critical that communication channels are open and easily accessible. The Greenwich Sustainability Committee not only works to advocate for these issues and translate them through our various initiatives, but we also provide our community with an opportunity to learn about the issues, understand the intersectorial implications, and get involved. Stewarding our natural resources is a collective responsibility, and we hope this new position of liaison will help us engage you more directly. These problems are not going to be solved on the municipal or federal level alone. We have to address them together, in community and in relationship. I look forward to providing you with updates. Please reach out to me or Janet with any questions or suggestions, and we look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next announcement is being offered by James Waters, Chairman of the Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening, members of the RTM. As you recall, in January, the Board of Education requested $3.2 million to replace the geothermal heating system at Hamilton Avenue School with the conventional HVAC system. The RTM voted 203 to 5 to reduce this request to $411,000 to cover the cost of a temporary HVAC system, while additional analysis was completed to show the side-by-side cost of rehabbing the geothermal system versus replacing it with a conventional system. The superintendent also sent us all a letter saying the Board of Ed had partnered with the Energy Management Advisory Committee, or EMAC, who would serve as lead on the analysis and present findings and recommendations back to the Board of Ed, BET and RTM. It seemed clear this analysis would take a month or two. Last week, the Chairs of the Budget Overview, Education, Finance, and Public Works Committees wrote a letter to the superintendent and chairman of EMAC asking for an update. We expressed our willingness to convene a special meeting if any updates were ready over the summer. The response we got from Dr. Jones last week indicated that not much progress has been made on this matter over the past five months. GPS decided to contract with AECOM to conduct a professional analysis over the summer when school is not in session. After the analysis is completed, the Board of Ed plans to design a system and provide an update early in 2025. GPS is also expecting another interim to get through all of next year and most likely the summer of 2025. This morning, the EMAC chair told me that EMAC has been out of the loop on this project since February. It sounds like EMAC is not involved in GPS's engagement with AECOM, nor is the scope of that work clear at this point. We hope the Board of Ed and EMAC will engage in this effort together, as promised, so we can get this done quickly and make sure decision-makers have full transparency on all information before another interim appropriation is requested. We felt it important to share this update with the RTM. Speaking only for myself, I don't quite understand the delay. The RTM asked for what I thought was a simple, objective analysis and expressed a willingness to fund it. Taxpayers deserve to understand the relative costs of rehabbing the existing system versus replacing it entirely so a prudent decision can be made for the long haul. As you'll recall, this information was not provided to us in January. I'm hopeful the numbers will speak for themselves, but must convey frustration that little progress appears to have been made on what should have been an urgent and short fuse exercise. It's disappointing this delay will cost taxpayers more. Rest assured, your committee chairs will continue to work this issue and ensure the analysis gets done and is shared with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final announcement this evening is Stephen Rubin, District Three.
Good evening. At our last meeting, we had a bake sale. And the bake sale was to raise funds for the Hamilton Avenue children to go to the Odyssey of the Mind convention. Well, they went. They did great. They were one of 800 schools internationally who attended. And the bake sale was phenomenal. They raised $1,300 at that bake sale. So, you know, it's always frustrating when people don't thank you for something. Well, they did thank us. And I wanted to share this with you. If I do it like this, can you see on the screen there? They did this hand-drawn thing here. They wrote a note, "We appreciate all your generous donations. You have helped us in our journey to the World Finals." From the Hamilton Avenue Odyssey team, they all signed their names, they drew pictures. So that's a nice note to start our evening with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it for our announcements. As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the May 2024 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted, which brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. Before I read you everything that we're going to be doing, I do want to thank the BOC and the finance committees. There are 40 items on the call. They were largely carrying the brunt of the call with 19 and 24 items, respectively. And they managed to somehow arrange for all their speakers and to get everything done. So I think that is worth noting. Okay, we have the consent items. Kim, you can watch me and make sure I don't miss anything. Consent items: 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 29, and 30. We have five groups of combined items. Group one is items four and 17. That's for the purpose of postponing. Group two, items 27 and 28, those will be for the Commission on Aging. Group three, items 31 and 32, Grass Island. Group four, 33 and 34, Round Hill Volunteer Fire Department. Group five is items 35 and 36, which is Nathaniel Withersall. Then we have eight separate items: items 14, 15, 25, 26, 37, 38, 39, and 40. Okay, so that is what we have ahead of us. It will be a long meeting, and I kind of wish we had the bake sale here tonight. Okay, pursuant to our rules, I will designate the following items to our consent calendar: 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 29, and 30. And if those items remain on our consent calendar, we will have no committee reports, and all we are hearing is what I'm about to say. All right, here we go. Item one is the nomination of Greg Paletti to be appointed a regular member of the Board of Human Services R3 for a term expiring June 30, 2027. Item number two is the appointment of James Doherty to be appointed a regular member of the Commission on Aging R2 for a term expiring June 30, 2027. Item three is the appointment of Jennifer Cohen to be appointed a regular member of the Board of Ethics R2 for a term expiring June 30, 2027. Item five is the appointment of Mary Shaw Marks to be appointed a regular member of the Historic District Commission R4 for a term expiring October 31, 2026. Item seven is the appointment of W. Brooks Harris to be a regular member of the Affordable Housing Trust Board for a term expiring March 31, 2027. Item seven is Anthony Chichetti to be appointed a regular member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board for a term expiring March 31, 2027. Item eight, and we owe Jude Collins of District 10 a big thanks for catching errors that our Board of Selectmen did not catch. And I know that they will do better next time. So Blaze Pontaro to be appointed a regular member R3 of the Fair Rent Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2026. Danielle Clarone to be appointed a regular member R4 of the Fair Rent Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2027. James Mack to be appointed a regular member R2 of the Fair Rent Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2026. Item 11, Michael Goldschmidt to be appointed a regular member R1 of the Fair Rent Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2026. Item 12 is Richard Saunders to be appointed a regular member R5 of the Fair Rent Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2027. Item 13 is Karen Hasterock to be appointed a regular member R6 of the Fair Rent Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2027. Now we jump over to item 16, which is the appointment of Mark Jaffe to be a regular member of the Board of Human Services R1 for a term expiring June 30, 2027. Item 18 is three resolutions required by the state for the Old Greenwich Building School Committee. They're bundled together. The Greenwich Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services to accept or reject a grant for the Old Greenwich Expansion Renovation Project at the Old Greenwich School. Second one is the Old Greenwich School Building Committee is hereby establishes the building committee with regard to the Old Greenwich Expansion renovation project at Old Greenwich School. And the last one is the representative town meeting hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Old Greenwich Expansion renovation project at the Old Greenwich School. Item 19 is a $55,000 gift to the Greenwich Library from the Friends of Greenwich Library for an electric book van. Item 20 is the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. It allows the program and complete applications filed in the town clerk's office are hereby approved for the purpose of encouraging business contributions to nonprofit organizations. Item 21 is that the representative town meeting does hereby approve and adopt the Town CDBG entitlement program, proposed annual action plan for program year 2024, as on file, 2024-25, as on file in the Office of the Town Clerk, and the last resolve clause that authorizes the First Selectment to accept grants for the purpose of carrying out the approved Community Block Grant Program for the town. Item 22 is $74,000 is hereby appropriated to be added to the following accounts for the registrar of voters: $55,000 for office supplies, $2,000 for professional services, $500 for data word processing supplies, $7,500 for mechanical supplies and small tools, $8,500 for maintenance of buildings. Item 23 is a substitute resolution that I'm going to offer. It's taking off the last five digits in the resolve clause. Resolve that the sum of $73,169 be in the same hereby appropriated to account F5011, not the 43111. Okay, so it's just account F5011. Item 24 is a change to the RTM appendix, not our rules, for the descriptions of the standing committees, the appendix of the rules related to update certain committees' operational responsibilities and remove wording inconsistencies. Hang on. Now we're down at number 29, 29, and 30 will also have two substitute resolutions. Resolved, both of them are related to Board of Ed. Resolve that the sum of $392,000 is hereby appropriated from, and this is the new language, the existing school lunch fund balance and to be added to the following accounts. And the accounts are on the call, those are correct. And item 30 is resolve that the sum of $110,000 is hereby appropriated from the existing school lunch fund balance and to be added to the following accounts. Is that it? Do I have any more on the...? I think that's it. That is it. Okay. Is there any objection to the designation of those items on the consent calendar? Craig, will you please prepare the vote? Okay. Consent calendar items, you can see them. If you were in favor of the consent calendar items, you would vote yes. If you were opposed, you would vote no. And you'll have two minutes on the clock. Open the vote, sorry. Okay, I have the vote on the consent calendar. Those in favor, 179; opposed, three; abstaining, three. Those items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. That now brings us to our five groups of combined calendar items. So, we have group one, which is items four and 17; group two, 27 and 28; group three, 31 and 32; group four, 33 and 34; and group five is 35 and 36. In order to combine the items, we do need to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes the five groups of combined items that I just mentioned? Okay, it has been moved and seconded to combine for voting purposes, those five groups. I'm not going to repeat them. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and does require a two-thirds majority to pass. We will first see if we can do it upon unanimous consent. If anyone objects, we will take a record vote. Is there anyone that objects to combining or suspending the rules to combine for voting purposes those five groups? Hearing no objection, the motion to suspend the rules stands adopted upon unanimous consent. Okay, that brings us to our first group of the combined items. Is someone from the Selectmen's Office here to introduce the resolution? Or is Mr. McKnight going to do it? Mr. McKnight, why don't you do it, since you're...? Oh, Ms.... Okay, well, he's just going to postpone it. So, Mr. McKnight, why don't you read them, and then we'll... If you could just read the resolutions in.
Good evening. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Ethics R1 for a term expiring June 30, 2027.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Did you want to offer your motion?
Yes, Holderberry was unable to attend our June meeting, so the Appointments Committee voted to postpone the nomination to the RTM September meeting.
Okay, and I'm assuming Town Services has no objection to that as well? Mr. McKnight, could you read the item number 17, please?
Yes, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation R1 for a term expiring June 30, 2027.
Okay, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us, Mr. McKnight?
Yes, Ms. Friedman also was unable to attend our June meeting, so our committee voted to postpone the nomination to the RTM September meeting.
Okay, so we can adopt the motion to postpone items four and 17, so group one of the combined calendar, to our September 2024 meeting upon unanimous consent. If anyone objects, we will take a record vote. Does anyone object to suspending, I'm sorry, to postponing those items until September? Hearing none, that motion to postpone has been adopted by unanimous consent. Four and 17 will come back to us in September. Okay, we're now going to move to combined group two, which is the two items on the Commission on Aging. Kip Bergweger, I believe, who's a member of the Commission on Aging Board, will be introducing those for us.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening, fellow members and guests. Item 27, resolve that Lori Contadino, Director of the Greenwich Commission on Aging, is hereby authorized to enter into agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Aging and Disability Services, CSLFRF beneficiary agreement, hashtag 24SRASC01GRE, for the sum of $146,035, and the remainder is as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Who's going first? Mr. Waters, I see you there waiting in the wings. James Waters, Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. The report I will deliver will encompass both items 27 and 28. The Budget Overview Committee voted 12-0-0 to approve these two items, which will fund design drawings for a renovation of the Wallace Center. Despite BOC's strong approval of this item, it was noted that the scope of the renovation has not yet been determined, and the renovation cost is not yet fully known. $1.3 million has been spent on interior renovations in the previous three years. $14,750 was funded earlier this year in March to conduct a feasibility study, and $30,000 was provided in the fiscal '24-'25 capital budget to conduct a building assessment report. The town's five-year capital plan lists an expected total cost of $2.7 million for the renovation in FY '25-'26 and FY '26-'27. Fortunately, the Wallace Center has access to funds to help pay for a renovation. As of today, assuming approval of this item, the Wallace Bequest has a remaining balance of $2,281,000, and actually, $285,000, $281,285. In addition, other funds earmarked for a renovation from various sources that are not yet gifted to the town total $508,000, a little bit more than that. Finally, the Commission on Aging is expecting to receive a $300,000 grant from the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development's Urban Action Grant Program. These funds total $3.1 million. A renovation cost in excess of $3.1 million would require funding from the town, either from the Capital Nonrecurring Fund, if small enough, or an additional appropriation from the bond fund. By comparison, the renovation of the Round Hill Firehouse, which we'll discuss tonight, an 8,000-square-foot building, is expected to cost significantly more than $3.1 million. As discussed on prior occasions, BOC strongly urges that the First Selectmen ensure this project has proper oversight to include determining the scope of the renovation and overseeing construction. This would be similar to the oversight and reporting required for school projects. In addition, BOC recommended hiring a professional estimator during the planning process to ensure costs are well-understood throughout town government and before final construction drawings are completed. throughout town government and before final construction drawings are completed. It would be unacceptable for this project to incur additional redesign fees at a later date if the project's scope and/or costs are such that taxpayer funds are required. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, fellow RTM members and guests, the Finance Committee met on Monday, June 3rd, and this was among the items we took up. The vote on accepting the, these, the grant was 12-0-0 by unanimous consent.
Thank you. Allison Solar, Chairwoman of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. I don't have much to add. You've heard a lot from James Waters, but I'll just, we took both items up together, and our vote was 11-0-0 by unanimous consent with District One absent. I'll just add that Lori Cantadino, Director of the Commission on Aging, was at our committee and presented the item, and she was asked if, you know, knowing that they don't know how much it's going to cost yet, but she did say that their plans are, the intent is that the Wallace Estate Grant and the funds gifted by the Friends of the Wallace Center would more than cover the cost. That is their plan.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative Rules Committee.
Legislative and Rules was not assigned this, but we did take it up. Just a very quick summation. The Commission on Aging has been renovating the Senior Center, which is now known as the Wallace Center, since 2013. Renovation involves areas on the first and second floors, including activity rooms, reception area, lounge corridors, elevator courtyard, and HVAC and air filtration system. In order to accomplish this work, it is necessary to retain professional architectural engineering services to develop a master renovation plan and construction documents. When the Commission is aging, Lori Cantadino, the Director, will be authorized to execute the agreement with the state, which is attached to the call. Commission on Aging has received notification that state funding became available to senior centers throughout the state of Connecticut, and the senior center has been allocated $146,035 for the renovation work, and that's item twenty-seven. Item twenty-eight is a monies from the Friends of the Wallace Center to make up the total cost of the renovation plan and construction documents, which is $350,000. We only voted on item twenty-seven, which was 11-0-0 on legal order and on the merits.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. No one has signed up to debate item twenty-seven. So, Mr. Bergweger, would you like to introduce item twenty-eight for us, please?
Item twenty-eight, resolve that $203,965 from the Friends of the Wallace Center be hereby appropriated and added to the following account, Z345-59560, for the purpose of securing professional architectural and engineering services for the continued renovation of the Wallace Center, formerly known as the Greenwich Senior Center.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. I don't know if any of the committees that took this up, I noticed many of you combined your reports. Does anyone want to add any more committee report for item twenty-eight? I'm not hearing anything. Okay. Again, no one has signed up to speak on item twenty-eight. Craig, could you please prepare the voting window for combined calendar group two, items twenty-seven and twenty-eight? We're getting there. It's very slow tonight. Let's see. There we go. Okay. Combined calendar group two, items twenty, where'd it go? Now I'm getting very nervous. Okay. Are we there? Okay. Combined calendar group two, items twenty-seven and twenty-eight, which are the two Commission on Aging. Could you please open the vote? Moment of truth. Okay. You may cast your vote. You have two, two minutes. Okay, so I have the vote on combined calendar two, which are the two Commission on Aging items. Those in favor, 188, opposed two, abstaining zero. Those two items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? There you go. Okay. That now brings us to combined group three, which are the Grass Island items. Amy Seabird, our Commissioner of Public Works. It's very crowded over there, isn't it?
There's something going on over here.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. You ready for me to go ahead?
Absolutely.
Okay. Item thirty-one, resolve that the sum of $6,500,000 be in the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the following account, K361-5965020216, known as Grass Island Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Thank you. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we hear the committee reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with James Waters, Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee voted 12-0-0 to approve this interim appropriation and bonding resolution. BOC heard from Rich Feminella, the wastewater division manager, who explained that the six-and-a-half-million-dollar interim appropriation is required for the refurbishment and redundancy improvements of the primary settling tanks at Grass Island. These settling tanks are a key step in the wastewater treatment process that serves all residents in town and operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The six-and-a-half-million-dollar requested is on top of $7.1 million that was approved in the FY2019-2020 capital budget for this project, for a total project cost of $13.5 million. This project wasn't discussed during the recent budget process, as DPW is waiting for bids to come in to better understand project costs. BOC focused on the significant cost escalations as compared to the original project cost five years ago. The cost today is based on bids recently received by DPW. If approved, the project would start later this year and would take two years to complete. The project would be funded by 20-year bonds as per current BET policy for sewer projects. It is worth noting and knowing, all of you, that the town is embarking upon a major overhaul of the Grass Island facility over the next five years. Indeed, including this interim, total expected capital improvements at Grass Island over the next five years are expected to approach $95 million. Over the next 15 years, DPW expects total capital improvements of $150 million for Grass Island. This work will be done in several phases. These figures do not include routine maintenance, sewer rehab, or pump station projects, like the $20.75 million for the Cos Cob Pump Station approved in the FY2425 budget. With so many large capital projects, BOC discussed that it would like to see better oversight to help DPW, to help the DPW team manage such large projects and ensure taxpayer dollars are being wisely used for important projects for the entire town. These also should not be funded via interim appropriations and need to be well-vetted and communicated to the community. We urge the First Selectmen to establish an independent building committee to work closely with DPW leadership and help get these important projects done. It's hard to see how the RTM could approve additional funding at these magnitudes without better certainty on oversight. BOC is standing by to engage with the First Selectmen to help make this happen. Finally, DPW is offering tours of the Grass Island facility to RTM members. I was fortunate to attend the facility, to attend to tour the facility with the BET Chair and a couple reporters two weeks ago. It was eye and nose-opening, and I highly recommend it to all of you, given the upcoming major projects and strategic importance of this facility to the entire town. Again, BOC voted 12-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Well, one of the advantages of following BOC is there's not much left to be said. We took up this item, met with Rich Feminelli, and also with Amy Seabird, and what we really ended up focusing on was the longer-term plan for the next five years, and how we felt we needed better clarity of what that plan was going to cost and entail. Our vote was 9-0-3 for both items. The vote, three abstentions, were just for that reason, that they wanted a better understanding of the long-term spending on Grass Island.
Thank you. Sharon Moss, Chairwoman of our Public Works Committee.
Good evening. Public Works, the only thing I have to add, because everybody's covered everything, is that if we were to deny this funding of this critical project, the outcome would be disastrous. We cannot afford to have such critical infrastructure stop working, because nobody stops flushing, so we need it. The vote for DPW, sorry, DPW, vote for Public Works was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger, did you take up thirty-one or just thirty-two, the bonding res-? Okay, we'll get to that in a minute. No one has signed up to debate item thirty-one, so we'll move on to thirty-two. Ms. Seabird, could we have the resolution for that, please? The bonding resolution?
So, in the call, we have here a resolution authorizing issuance of six-and-a-half-million-dollar of bonds for the town to meet a portion of the capital appropriation for the Grass Island Wastewater Treatment Plant sewage system appropriations for fiscal year 2324, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose, and the rest of it is, of this resolution, is as it appears in the call.
Thank you very much. May a member please move the adoption of that resolution? The item has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to offer your committee's reports? Kip Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Inasmuch as this was a binding resolution, we voted 11-0-0 on legal order and the merits.
Thank you. Did any of the other committees want to address the bonding resolution, or you're good? Okay. No one has signed up to speak on the bonding resolution, so we will combine these. I do want to remind everybody that a bonding resolution, in order to be approved, requires a majority of the full membership, which is 116, although based on the reports received, I don't anticipate that we will have a problem reaching that threshold, so that's why it is combined with, the bonding resolution is going with item thirty-one. Okay? Craig, could you please prepare? What is that? Yeah. Okay. All right, let's see. This is going to be trying for all of us. Okay. Combined calendar group three, item thirty-one and thirty-two, which are Grass Island items, okay? Craig, could you please open the vote? Okay. You should be good. Let's see. There we go. Okay. You have two minutes. Okay. Has everyone cast their vote that would like to cast their vote? Okay, we're going to close the vote. We're going to close it for no other reason that it's really wonky, and I am going to develop the worst case of hives by the end of this meeting if it collapses. So, I hope that doesn't happen, Craig, right? You're going to guarantee that. All right, we're going to close the vote. Okay, I have the vote on items thirty-one and thirty-two, which are the Grass Island items. Those in favor, 180, opposed four, abstaining three. Those items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? There you go. Okay, that is going to bring us to combined Okay, that is gonna bring us to combine group four, which are items thirty three and thirty four for the Round Hill Volunteer Fire Department. Do we have someone from the fire department or that's gonna be offering? Okay. If you could introduce yourself. Item thirty three, you're just gonna read very briefly the resolution.
Uh, David Chass for Round Hill Volunteer Fire Company. Resolved that the sum of three million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars be. And the same is hereby appropriated to account number B two zero six dash five nine five six zero dash two zero one one one. Round Hill Fire Station.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Beginning with James Waters of our Budget Overview Committee.
The report I'll deliver uh, includes items thirty three and thirty four together. The Budget Overview Committee voted twelve zero zero to approve this interim appropriation and bonding resolution. Chief Joe McHugh, Assistant Chief Justin McCarthy, and David Chass from the Round Hill Volunteer Fire Company attended our meeting. Mr. Chass is the project lead and explained that the cost of renovating the Round Hill Fire Station has risen from two million dollars to four point eight five million dollars over the past six years. This three point eight five million dollar interim appropriation is on top of one million dollars provided in the fiscal twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And twenty nineteen, twenty twenty capital budgets. Yes, a while ago. It includes the five hundred thousand dollar grant that will be received by the state. And the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be funded by private donations. The taxpayer portion will be funded by five year bonds as per current BET policy. As many of you know, the Round Hill Firehouse hasn't been renovated in forty years and quote violates all codes. This seems to be a common theme. It's unfortunate this project has lingered for years and hasn't been included in the capital budget proposed to the BET for the past several years. In the time since the project was first provided, in the time since the project was first provided with one million dollars. The design plans have been completed, final P and Z and ARC approvals have been received, and costs have increased by one hundred and forty two percent. To include seven hundred thousand dollars because of a ruling by the State Labor Board that the project is subject to prevailing wage. BOC once again urges the first selectmen to ensure that this project and others like it has appropriate oversight through an independent building committee. This will not only help ensure that important projects like this stay on time and on budget. But that there is increased transparency to taxpayers when a project is delayed for years at taxpayer expense. BOC is happy to engage with the first selectmen to help make this happen. BOC's vote was twelve zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And with her debut at the RTM podium is Hillary Hiroh. She's the Vice Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so Town Services took up both item thirty three and thirty four. The bonding was taken up together. For the three point eight five million uh, Round Hill Firehouse appropriation, we voted twelve zero zero in favor. David Chass, Round Hill Volunteer Fire Company and Assistant Chief McCarthy presented. Um, now the Round Hill Firehouse is the only all volunteer firehouse in Greenwich and covers a very large backcountry district. And it's existed for seventy six years. Responses for the Round Hill Station are at a ten year high. Responded to three hundred and fifty two calls in our last fiscal year with one thousand two hundred and thirty five firefighter responses. With twenty volunteers, including a couple in training. The firehouse was built in nineteen fifty seven. The last significant renovation was over forty years ago. Ten years ago, they essentially, as we discussed, condemned in violation of many, many codes. From building to health safety to OSHA, they are even in violation of multiple fire codes. Yeah, but continue to operate uh, with duct tape and glue, having no choice. Example, the kitchen and the dorms are condemned also. December two thousand eighteen, six years ago. The plan was originally submitted to the town for an appropriation projected at two million for the renovation. Without final architecture, complete engineering, town P and Z, with the understanding with the BET that there would be a second appropriation. The increase in price for the same final plans that have existed since twenty twenty one is due to multiple valid issues, including the many years delay. The post-COVID price increases, P and Z process delays. They are newly subjected to the prevailing wage statutes with the State Labor Department despite being on private property. That added about six to seven hundred K to the budget. Round Hill has raised on their own uh, seven hundred and fifty K in private funds to their credit. Uh, from the community and plus a five hundred K state grant that goes towards the build. Complete gut renovation replaces all, including the new five dorms, which will be for certified volunteers living full time in the firehouse, which will really help. Plus, it includes all the conduits in the wall, saving tens of thousands for any potential future career firehouse addition. They will use temporary quarters but be fully operational throughout the process, so they will move some people to a trailer. And they're expecting about a year to build if approved. And again, uh, we voted twelve zero zero in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Greg Zorthian with the um, Finance Committee Report, please.
Well, Finance took this up. Um, we were fortunate to have. Uh, uh, David Chass had come to see us and talk to us about that. I do want to call him out and thank him for agreeing to go last on our twenty four call uh, meeting. As he allowed the town employees to go ahead and get home earlier. Um, I don't have much to add on on this uh, other than the um, the plan is if the. The building will be fitted so that it can take additions. If there's ever a plan to put professional staff up there as well and without incurring the huge cost of retrofitting the entire building. Our vote was eleven zero one for both uh, the appropriation and and the bonding. Uh, the uh, the abstention was uh, because of the inherent nature of the expenditure.
Thank you. Cheryl Moss, our Chairwoman of Public Works Committee.
Evening. Uh, I'd really have nothing to add. Um, our vote was ten zero zero uh, with districts one and three absent, but it was not their fault. There was a glitch on the call in, so. Um, but that's, we we voted on both items uh, thirty three and thirty four.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple people who've signed up, the first being Rachel Kahana to be followed by Stephen Meskers, and the last will be. Mr. Chass, you're gonna pass? You would be the third. You're passing or you're? Okay, so Rachel Kahana first.
Good evening and thank you. Um, I'm Rachel Kana. I'm the State Representative for the hundred and forty ninth District and a former RTM member from District Ten. I have lived in Northwest Greenwich for almost twenty years. About six years ago, I stood before this body to advocate for a sense of the meeting resolution for a fire station in Northwest Greenwich. The October twenty eighteen vote on on the summer identifying the need for a fire station in Northwest Greenwich was a hundred and twenty six in favor. Fifty five against and three abstentions. Ultimately, a study was was conducted by Matrix Consulting, which reaffirmed what current fire chief, Chief McHugh, had already identified. There is a critical need for better fire coverage in Northwest Greenwich. Tonight, I urge you to approve the three point eight million dollars in funding for renovations for the Round Hill Volunteer Fire Department. So that we can start to address this gap in coverage. My colleague, Representative Meskers, worked very hard to secure. Five hundred thousand dollars in bonding for this project from the state several years ago, which will be an enormous help. We've all seen what happens when we defer funding for critical projects. The longer we wait, the greater the cost. More importantly, the longer we wait, the greater the risk to our residents. The Round Hill Volunteer Fire Company has seen significant growth in the past ten years, and it is now the most active volunteer fire company in Greenwich. Funding this important renovation project will boost their membership and therefore their ability to respond to emergencies in a timely manner. I love living where I do. Northwest Greenwich is beautiful, but I worry that if, God forbid, there's a fire, the lack of coverage could result in a devastating loss. We can take steps to be prepared for an emergency. Please vote to approve this funding and let's give this part of our town the protection it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Meskers, Representative from District Six, to be followed by David Chass.
So. Obviously, this is an important project to the town. I've worked, you know, strongly with the group to fund this, and I'm glad to see it moving forward. I urge your vote. The only important piece of information I'd give to all of you, so it's going to the Volunteer Fire Department. Well, the project, there's been a negotiated uh, first lien or mortgage from the town. So the town's investment, they will have the right of first refusal, so the investment in the property. Will ultimately benefit the town directly should the volunteer uh, fire department cease operations. So I I think that was the only thing that I hadn't heard in any of the reports. I think that should factor into your approval. Uh, apart from the need that the town is not putting its money at risk, it's investing in a project that's worthwhile. I urge your support. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. David Chass.
Like to thank all of you for having us here today, um, especially our two state representatives who have been so supportive of us. Um, despite what Mr. Mesker says, we have no intention of uh, closing our operations at any point in the near in the near future. We're. We're seventy six years in and looking forward to the next uh, seventy six years for that. Um, this project is important. We have been chasing it for five and a half years now. Um, it, we are in dire need. Uh, we are responding at a level that is higher uh, than nearly a decade. Um, most recently to uh, the earlier comments, we had three fires in the last uh, ten to twelve days. Um, two of them were during the day between noon and one o'clock, which is, you know, can often be expected to be. The challenge, most challenging time for our volunteers to respond. And to those two fires, the first one on Riversville Road, we had ten members of our Volunteer Fire Company responded to that. With all three pieces of apparatus that we have. A week later, we had a smaller fire on Round Hill Road, uh, also in the middle of the day that six volunteers responded to. And then just recently, uh, last week, there was a kitchen fire uh, up on King Street uh, at nine thirty at night. And we had six P, six uh, volunteers who responded to that call uh, with our apparatus as well. So we are operating very well. We look forward to a modernized firehouse, getting the dorm rooms filled up. Uh, further enhancing our coverage and appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our. That concludes the speakers for item thirty three. Item thirty four is now gonna come before us. Do we have somebody who's introducing the bonding resolution for the firehouse? Mr. Bergweger, you want to introduce the fire, the bonding resolution, since I think yours is the only report that probably hasn't been given?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item thirty four, resolution authorizing the issuance of three million eight hundred fifty thousand dollar bonds. Of the town to meet a portion of the capital budget appropriation for the rehabilitation of the Round Hill Volunteer Fire Station. For fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. And pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose. Legislative and Rules took up, took this up.
Hang on, wait a minute. I gotta get it before us. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution?
So moved.
Look at you, eager beaver there. Um, the resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Bergweger, you're on.
Uh, Legislative Rules took up on Monday, vote was on merits and the legal order was eleven zero zero.
Okay, thank you. Did any of the other committees that took up this item or the previous item want to add anything? Okay, we do have uh, the same three speakers have signed up. Mr. Chass, do you want to say anything further about the bonding resolution? Mr. Meskers, um, Ms. Kana, did she leave or she's still here? Okay, are you gonna pass? Okay. Um, okay, that concludes the debate on item thirty four. Craig, could you please prepare? The voting window for combined calendar group four, items thirty three and thirty four. Okay, combined ca, this is combined calendar group four, items thirty three and thirty four, which we know are the Round Hill Volunteer Fire Department. Again, this. Thirty four is a bonding resolution. It does require a hundred and sixteen. Majority of the full membership, based on our reports, I don't anticipate that we will have a difficult time meeting that threshold. Could you please open the the votes, Craig? Or open the window? Okay, you should be good to start. You have two minutes on the clock. Um, has everyone cast their vote that wants to vote? Okay, Craig, could you please close the window? Okay, I have the vote for combined calendar group four, which are the two fire department, Round Hill Volunteer Fire Department. Those in favor, one hundred and ninety, opposed one, abstaining zero. Those two items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. That now brings us to uh, the last of our combined groups, which is combined group five, items thirty five and thirty six. Which are related to Nathaniel Witherell. Is there someone here from Nathaniel Witherell who will be introducing that resolution? Is one of the selectmen here who would like to introduce that resolution? Ms. McWigan, are you here? Or is first, okay, first selectman Camilo is coming down to introduce the resolution, item thirty five.
Thirty, thirty fiver. Resolved at the sum of four. Resolved at the sum of four hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars appropriated to be added to the following count. H four fifty fifty nine zero seventy galvanized pipe replacement project. Refer to finance, humans, health and human services and public works.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Allison Solar. Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Hello again. Uh, we took up item thirty five and thirty six together. Is it okay if I report on those together? Okay, great. So we had Brad Markowitz, Chair of the Nathaniel. So we had Brad Markowitz, Chair of the Nathaniel Witherall Board, present these items. He explained that the galvanized pipes and drains for wastewater in the building are way past their useful life and are now an issue that must be addressed after, this was pushed down the road for about five years. If the pipes fail, it's pretty catastrophic for the building and the people who live there. He reminded the committee that these were the two items that the BET did not approve in the budget, you know, just recently, but that he and Nathaniel Witherall Board had agreed they need more information before coming back to the RTM. He stated that now he has that information because they have hired a consulting engineer and who determined the best solution and gave an estimate. He said that, you know, assuming this will go forward, once this interim appropriation is approved, then they will go out and get competitive bids. And he hopes the project would start and finish this summer and would take about eight to nine weeks. As I mentioned before, we combined the two items and our vote was 11-0-0 by unanimous consent with District One absent.
Thank you. James Waters, Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
BOC voted 12-0-0 to approve the interim appropriations in items 35 and 36. Peter Kelly, the Vice Chair of the Nathaniel Witherall Board, attended our meeting and explained that these items were removed from the FY 2425 budget by the BET, who wanted additional information. This information has now been provided as listed in the Explanos to the call. I will not go through things Allison already said. The final thing BOC discusses is it's unfortunate that these items weren't included in the FY 2425 budget, given the severity of the problems. Going forward, BOC is hopeful the town can lessen its reliance on interim appropriations for known priority projects for the town. BOC vote again, 12-0-0.
Thank you. Cheryl Moss, Chairwoman of our Public Works Committee.
Good evening again. Public Works took up items 35 and 36 together and everything's really been covered. Really, and our vote was 9-0-0.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Finance took up these two items together. Our vote was 11-0-1 abstention. We have, I have nothing to add, what's previously.
Thank you. Okay, we do have one individual who signed up for both 35 and 36. That is Mr. Meskers. Do you care to address? Is that a yes or a no? That's a no? Okay. Okay, there's no one else that signed up to debate item 35. Item 36 will now come before us. Could we have somebody read that into the record, please? Mr. Camillo, First Selectman Camillo, oh, you're tag teaming? Who's coming down? Janet Stone McWigan will be reading that one.
All right. Resolved that the sum of $225,000 is hereby appropriated and to be added to the following account, H45059070, sewer drain replacement project, hashtag, oh.
It's on Instagram. Okay. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved in second and is now before us. I believe that all of the committees that gave the report on the previous item covered it. Is that correct? And we have no one that has signed up for debate? Okay, so we can move to the vote on combined calendar group five, which are items 35 and 36, Nathaniel Witherall. Okay, this is group, group five, 35 and 36, Nathaniel Witherall. You'll have two minutes on the clock. Craig, could you please open the vote? Okay. There you go. Okay, I have the vote on combined group five, which are the two items for Nathaniel Witherall, 35 and 36. Those in favor, 191, opposed, two, abstaining, one. Those items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. That now brings us to the beginning of our separate calendar. Item 14 is the first on that calendar that we'll be taking up, which is the nomination of Lauren O'Keefe to the Board of Health. May we have someone, First Selectman Camillo is going to introduce that resolution.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Select may be appointed as a regular member of the Board of Health for a term expiring June 30th, 2028, Lauren O'Keefe.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved in second and is now before us. May we have the reports from the two committees that considered this, beginning with Allison Soler, to be followed by Bob McKnight of Appointments.
Hello again. Mrs. O'Keefe is an APRN and has worked at the Bennet Cancer Center for 22 years, served on the RTM for 10 years, and has been on the Board of Health for five years. She stated that she would like to continue because the board's activities are so much more than the leaf blower ordinance. And she has worked with the medical reserve, with vaccinations, helping people in storms, a pandemic, et cetera, et cetera, highly qualified. Committee members asked about why Ms. O'Keefe voted to repeal the noise ordinance. And she stated that it was because the gas powered leaf blower issue was a nuisance issue, not a health issue. Committee members continue to ask similar questions. Our vote on Ms. O'Keefe failed 4-5-2 with Districts One absent. Districts Two, Three, Five, Six, and Eleven voted no and stated that it was because the board showed a lack of judgment to repeal the noise ordinance. And then it raises questions about how the board functions in general, and especially without any consultation with the town, and that the board should have sought a better solution. District Seven and District Eight voted to abstain because they believe Ms. O'Keefe did not take a lead on the decision to repeal the ordinance.
Thank you. Bob McKnight, Chairman of our Appointments Committee, with the Appointments Committee report.
Mrs. O'Keefe was a board member that voted in favor of repealing the town's noise ordinance with short notice, leaving the state's laws controlling the town's noise. Mrs. O'Keefe explained her reasoning for the vote, noise studies reportedly not peer reviewed, not specific to noise, the distances not specific as to duration of noises, et cetera, and was questioned by many members of the committee. Our vote, 1-9-2.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, I noticed that District 10 also wanted to offer something. Brooks Harris, Chairman of District 10.
Hello. District 10 took up items 14, the appointment of Lauren O'Keefe to the Board of Health, and 15, the appointment of Sarah Gamble to the Board of Health, together. It was reported that in some committees, there was opposition to these candidates because they joined the Board of Health in unanimously revoking Greenwich's noise ordinance in connection with RTM efforts to amend the statute. D10 elected to take these items up. Members supporting the candidates argued that noise is not related to health and that the board was justified in withdrawing its oversight of the issue. They also highlighted that the medical experience of each candidate and their service to the community. The district discussed whether revoking the statute so abruptly and without arrangement for another town sponsor taking over the ordinance was responsible. Supporters of the candidate noted that while there would no longer be a local noise ordinance, the town was still protected by state noise ordinance. They also noted that the Office of Selectmen, the RTM, acted quickly to reinstate the ordinance, so any harm was limited. D10 member Michael Goldstein moved that the district approve the following statements. "D10 makes a motion to support Sarah Gamble because we feel her medical work for the community warrants reappointment." That passed 13-2-2. "District 10 also made a motion to support Lauren O'Keefe because we feel her medical work for the community warrants reappointment." That passed 13-1-3. People voting no stated they voted against approving the candidates because they felt it was inappropriate to cancel Greenwich's noise ordinance without a prearranged plan to replace it. People abstained because they want to balance the candidate's community involvement against their abandonment of oversight and to do more diligence on their track record before offering an unqualified endorsement." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with the speaker sign up sheet. I want to remind people a couple of things. Nominations are often very difficult. There will be no ad hominem attacks allowed. I'll shut that down immediately. And the candidates are going to speak on their own behalf. They will be going last. Okay? So our first speaker is Lauren Raven, Select Person Lauren Raven, to be followed by Select Person Janet Stone McWigan.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting to go first. Good evening, everyone. I've been here before when we've had a candidate that needed to be spoken about. I have my red book that I take all my notes in. We interview every candidate. We ask every candidate the same questions and I'm the one that takes the notes. I want to say that I actually have known Lauren since we were in high school together. So I don't know how many people in the audience could speak on behalf of somebody that they've known since high school. Lauren is an asset to this community. I've served with her on the RTM for District Nine. That's why I'm sitting in my District Nine to show my support. And when we made our decision, when I made my decision, I looked at her body of work, what she's been doing for the community from a licensed nurse perspective. And yes, what happened was not the way that we wanted the outcome to occur. But in the end, and I think the saying is the ends justify the means, but the means justified the end. The noise ordinance got passed, the leaf blower ban got passed. And now we're trying to hold somebody accountable for something that they thought that they were making the best decision. There's been a lot of sort of negative comments. And we have to remember, we're all neighbors. We live in this community. We care about this community. And I urge you to reappoint Lauren O'Keefe.
Thank you. Janet Stone McWigan, to be followed by Brian Malin of District Nine.
So thank you, Madam Moderator. The selectman takes seriously the responsibility of nominating members to the various boards and commissions that oversee so much of our town's governance. Greenwich is very fortunate to have a large pool of willing and qualified volunteers to take on these roles. And we greatly appreciate their service. It's rare that the selectmen disagree about a reappointment. However, tonight, you've been asked to consider the reappointment of two members of the Board of Health, over which we did disagree. So it's only right that I explain my dissenting vote. There's nothing personal behind my vote. But I don't have to remind you of the upset over the way in which the town's noise ordinance was vacated by the Board of Health. And when these members came up for reappointment, I heard there were many RTM members who hold the entire board accountable and that these nominations were unlikely to pass by consent. As your select person, it gives me pause to forward controversial nominations to the RTM, both out of respect for its 230 members, as well as the feelings of the nominees. That's not to say I will never forward contentious items to the RTM because there are times that the RTM is the appropriate forum to work out hard decisions on behalf of the town. What decided the matter for me was the appearance of, if not an actual violation, of the Freedom of Information Act. Whether or not one is a supporter of the restrictions on the use of gas powered leaf blowers, we expect the actions of our boards to be transparent and follow a collaborative process. And in my view, the Board of Health did not uphold the standard when it took its vote. So I will take this opportunity to remind every elected office holder and appointed board or commission member that we are all obliged to uphold the Freedom of Information Act. There is an excellent and short training video that can be found on the town website. And if you haven't already, I strongly recommend that you watch it at your earliest opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Malin, and then I have District 10. I know Michael Goldstein has signed up as an individual. Brooks, is there a District 10? You know, as Chair, are you going to, or are you just, your committee report was suffice? Okay, but I had District 10. There's no one, you're not representing District 10 beyond your report. Okay. So Brian Malin, to be followed by Fred Camillo.
Hi, Brian Malin, District Nine. I rise tonight to ask you to please vote yes on reappointing Lauren O'Keefe to the Board of Health. I've served with Lauren in District Nine since 2018. I've known her, to always have been interested in engaging all sides of an issue. She's proven deeply knowledgeable and passionate about the issues impacting our district, her service on the Health and Human Service Committee and the Board of Health. She has a history of invaluable service to the town, from volunteering at Board of Health vaccine clinics to helping the town navigate the pandemic. Lauren's a passionate and outspoken advocate for the town's elderly and the services provided to them. I think it tragic if we, as a body, disqualify our neighbors from serving the town because of a single vote or strongly held belief on a very controversial topic. Please join me in voting yes to reappoint Lauren. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Camillo, to be followed by Karen Faselyotis.
Madam Moderator, members of the RTM and guests, no one was more upset with that vote, I think, in town than I was. That being said, I stand in strong support of Lauren O'Keefe for this reappointment. Lauren, even though I'm way younger than both Lawrens, I went to school with them. I've known her for a long time, a lifelong resident, but a volunteer for I don't know how many years. 10-year member of this body. In 2017, she was a, became a member of the Medical Reserve Corps, which is managed by the Board of Health. In 2019, she became a member of this board. Before, during, and after the pandemic, she volunteered countless hours for the residents of this town. She's strongly supported by her colleagues on the board. And I just want to say, you know, we may disagree on certain things, right? There's some things I vote on later on, I get mad at myself for. But I hope that we don't set a precedent by looking at one vote that we may happen to disagree with and voting that volunteer off a board, committee, or commission. Because then it'll be hard, we're doing really well, we're getting lots of volunteers, thank God, and building a bench for all of these entities. But if that ever starts to take hold, Lord help us. I strongly support the not renomination of Lauren O'Keefe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Faselyotis, to be followed by Caroline Basely.
I stand in support of Lauren O'Keefe for reappointment to the Board of Health. My name is Dr. Karen Faselyotis, and I'm here today speaking as an individual. As a person who has a doctorate in toxicology and who has worked side by side with industrial hygienists to develop air quality standards for exposure to toxic chemicals in the workplace and the environment, I can unequivocally state that Ms. O'Keefe and the others on the Board of Health did their jobs and reviewed and evaluated the myriad of data and reports on the potential health effects of gas leaf blowers. As one of a team, Ms. O'Keefe and the other board members, having correctly concluded that there would be, there should be no change in the ordinance based on health issues, then voted to repeal the ordinance to return the noise ordinance to the RTM rather than leave the ordinance as it was, probably facing more criticism. In the end, this was the correct call, even though some have criticized how it was done. Why? Because their action ultimately allowed this legislative body, you who serve in the RTM, to enact a noise ordinance that, while many may take issue with what was passed, reflected the vote of 230 individuals who purportedly represented their constituents in their district. I will also add that Ms. O'Keefe should not have had to endure the malice and false accusations that have been levied at her. As a registered nurse, she's invaluable to the Board of Health and is needed to provide the balance of having health professionals and other backgrounds and experience on the board. Her work as part of the board has resulted in many decisions that have positively affected both the Health Department and our town's health. She has done that admirably. As a volunteer, and I will repeat that, as a volunteer who has dedicated many hours of service to our town, Ms. O'Keefe should be overwhelmingly voted back on the Board of Health. I ask you to vote yes for Lauren O'Keefe.
Thank you. Caroline Basely, to be followed by Michael Goldstein.
Thank you, Madam Moderator and members of the RTM. Tonight, I'm here to speak in favor of voting to reappoint, actually, two members of the Board of Health, Dr. Sarah Gamble, Vice Chair of the Board, and Doctor of Record for the Greenwich Health Department, and Lauren O'Keefe, of course, a certified family nurse practitioner and an advanced practice registered nurse. Both members of the Board were interviewed by the RTM HHS Committee and Appointed Committee on June 4, '24, and voted down for reappointment to the Board of Health. Draft minutes of the RTM committee meetings recorded a no reappointment vote for both members. This negative vote was due to what committee members believed as a lack of judgment for the voting to repeal the Board of Health ordinance. It further stated that committee members raised questions about the Board of Health functions and in general, especially without a consultation with the town, and believed that the Board should have sought a better solution than to repeal the ordinance. In addition, the questioning of the two board members at the committee meetings were consistent, noting that the Board's action in rescinding the noise ordinance left the town with no local control. The process that led up to the Board's voting on 12/7/23 to rescind the noise ordinance involved the following. The Board voted unanimously to turn down the Quiet Yards proposal, which was changes to the Board's noise ordinance in June 2023. The changes included, but was not limited to, fourth year phase-in of e-blowers use, with the first year noting to no changes to allow landscapers and homeowners to prepare. Consisting of healthcare and public health backgrounds and interests, the Board Subcommittee spent months reviewing all the information and data provided by Quiet Yards. It should be noted that more and more studies and articles were continually being added, bogging down each board member with more reviews while handling their work and in their work commitments and their families. In the end, the information provided did not warrant a phase-in plan for e-blowers use, which was by the end of the fourth year mounted to somewhere about five, six-month ban on gas-operated leaf blowers. There was no strong conclusive, well-grounded scientific data providing evidence of a health hazard to the general population caused specifically by a gas-operated leaf blower. Data would need to indicate a direct cause and effect relationship and also explain why a human health hazard is only a concern during some months and not others. In addition, an answer to the question of why gas-driven equipment that was also...
Ms. Basely, this is not relevant to them, their nomination. I don't think we need to re-legislate and rediscover the leaf blower and whether or not your scientific interpretation of that. I think we just want to hear about why these candidates may or may not be good for the Board.
Well, I think that the purpose of me telling you the background information was is that it was clear to me at the committee meetings that there was poor judgment based upon not only these two members of the Board, but the rest of the Board. And consistently, the community wanted to know what the process was in order for the Board and these two members to actually come up with the repeal of the noise ordinance. This is the only way to determine, to give you a full view of actually what happened. May I continue?
I will allow you to continue if you talk about the merits of the individuals. I don't think we are here to hear the scientific data. These are people that we are discussing right now, okay?
People on the Board that...
Ms. Basely?
Yes.
Please stick with whether or not they're qualified based on their qualifications.
Absolutely. I think that the members that will speak on behalf of themselves will tell the community or the RTM at large how qualified they are, how important they are to the Health Department. Dr. Sarah Gamble, she serves as the Doctor of Record for the Department of Health. She enables us to vaccinate the community...
Ms. Basely, this is about Ms. O'Keefe, so if we could focus on Ms. O'Keefe. Ms. Gamble will come next.
Okay, okay. Lauren O'Keefe is a registered advanced APRN. She's also an FNP that enables us to, you know, tap into her skills and her expertise because we have a family health program. She also assists the Department of Health with vaccinating numerous hundreds of, you know, residents of the town, whether it be a flu clinic and/or a COVID-19 or any other pathogen that needs vaccination against, or even a countermeasure being given out at the time of any kind of endemic or pandemic. So I think that Lauren is a, has demonstrated her ability to give back to the community, her endless hours of volunteer with the Health Department is endless, and I think that is what the information that people wanted to hear about her poor judgment reflects the rest of the poor judgment that they believe was, you know, given to repealing the ordinance. And I'm sorry that I've taken up this, but I was led to believe that you, as the moderator, wanted to know the process, so that's what I prepared my talk on.
Thank you very much. Michael Goldstein, to be followed by Donna Gaddiosozil.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Michael Goldstein. I'm a physician and RTM member from District 10 and a member of the Health and Human Services Committee, who voted in favor of my fellow committee member, Lauren O'Keefe. I'm most, and I'm speaking as an individual. Although I do not agree with the way the Board of Health handled the noise ordinance, the issue was quickly resolved by the RTM, who aggressively and promptly passed a new ordinance by a strong majority vote. The candidate has performed her duties of dealing with public health issues, including the pandemic, as the only nurse practitioner member of the Board. She is a strong firefighter for what she believes in and serves a vital role on the Board. Board of Health members should be judged regarding reappointment with how well they serve the town regarding the mission of the Board of Health, not how they voted on a single issue that was quickly resolved. Their potential unintended consequences to not reappointing Nurse O'Keefe. It sends a message to the current Board that none of them will be reappointed. This will at least dampen their interest in doing their jobs as board members, or even worse, result in mass resignations. Neither of these possibilities are good for Greenwich. We are supposed to be an apolitical body, yet for many, this is a political decision. District 10 voted overwhelmingly to support Lauren O'Keefe's nomination. I'm asking you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Gaddiosozil, to be followed by Tom Agresta.
Good evening. I've been a member of the Health and Human Services for several terms. I'm now the alternate. I know Lauren O'Keefe from District 9 and Health and Human Services, but what concerns me tonight, that these nominations are coming up based on the noise ordinance, okay? The noise ordinance is one little bit in what these candidates have achieved in the Board of Health. Their job is to oversee the policies and procedures. They see the policies and procedures for the clinics, the maternal child, the STD clinics. They oversee the policies and procedures for the labs, the ticks, Lyme, the well water you drink. They oversee the policies and procedures for foodborne illnesses, okay? The inspections of your restaurants, of your delis. They oversee the infectious disease components. Those are your flu clinics, okay? You don't have an order, can't get flu shots. So remember this when Dr. Campbell comes up, right? The other thing is, they ushered us through a pandemic in this country. People have complained and said, oh, I couldn't get my vaccinations. That was controlled by the state, when they delivered the vaccinations and how many. This Board was ready. As soon as those vaccinations came down the line, they gave them to our residents. That's the 95% of the qualifications that these two members bring to the Board. We're looking at the ordinance, which is 5%, and it's not even in a life and death matter like influenza is and COVID. I strongly recommend that you support these two candidates tonight. Thank you for all the work they have done.
Thank you. Tom Agresta, to be followed by Carol Zerilli, to be followed by Lauren O'Keefe, who's our final speaker.
Thank you very much. What I want to say is, we're coming out of our contentious last year RTM. Let's not return to that. I read some things that were really not kind and really something we should not, it's not proper. Let's give them a second chance. Let's use this as a teachable moment and move forward. Let's give Laura a reappointment, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Zerilli, to be followed by our final speaker, which is Lauren O'Keefe.
For all of the positive comments about Lauren that have already been said, I don't feel I need to add additional. She's more than qualified to serve on this Board. She's already done it for five years, and I'm going to vote yes, and I hope you follow me.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Lauren O'Keefe.
I am a proud lifelong resident of Greenwich. I've always been interested in healthcare. I started my journey as a floor aide volunteering at Greenwich Hospital. When I obtained my BSN, I worked at Greenwich Hospital in the ICU as well as in Stanford Hospital ICU. When I finally became a family nurse practitioner, I moved on to the Bennett Cancer Center. I obtained further certification as an advanced oncology nurse practitioner, and I am an advanced certified hospice and palliative care nurse. I've been working there for 22 years. Perhaps I took care of you or your neighbor. I've been a lifelong volunteer in Greenwich, in the ambulance corps when there was one, American Red Cross blood drives, Girl Scouts, PTA, Byron Beach cleanup. I volunteered in several Greenwich organizations, as you've heard, the RTM for 10 years, Health and Human Services, the Medical Reserve Corps for seven years, and the Board of Health for five. The Department of Health is responsible for protecting, promoting, and improving the health of Greenwich residents by implementing the provisions of essential health services and carrying out the public care core activities. This includes monitoring the public's health status, investigating and responding to disease outbreaks, enforcing public health's laws and regulations to protect the public's health, developing health policies, identifying critical health needs, educating the public about public health issues, advocating health resources to those who are in need, and planning for emergencies which may require a public health response. As an advanced practice RN, I serve as a consultant to the Director of Health as needed for one of the largest divisions within the department, Family Health. I've assisted the Department of Health and volunteered my time to vaccinate hundreds of residents against COVID-19 during the pandemic, the flu every year, including during the pandemic, and administered other adult vaccines as needed. My past five years of service in the Board of Health have enlightened me to how important the board members are in assisting the department in areas of medicine, nursing, finance, law, and social media, as these are disciplines that are carried out in the department's programs and activities. My reappointment to the Board is being challenged because of a vote on one of the most complicated, controversial, and contentious subjects that has come before the Board. Perhaps the way the decision was made could have been done differently. I feel I have a lot to contribute. I would like to continue to use my gift of caring, volunteering, and expertise in advanced nursing to serve on the Board of Health and assist in the Department of Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? Item 14, Lauren O'Keefe, reappointment to the Board of Health. Okay, could you please open the clock or start the clock, open the vote? Item 14, nomination of Lauren O'Keefe, the Board of Health. You have two minutes. Is that, Craig, that came in?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We're going to close the vote. I have the vote on the nomination or the renomination of Lauren O'Keefe. Those in favor, 122. Opposed, 55. Abstaining, 17. That motion has carried. We now come to item 15, the nomination of Sarah Gamble to the Board of Health. First electman, Camillo, will introduce that resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Can we show the vote? Ms. Mr. Camillo, you may go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a regular member of the Board of Health for a term expiring June 30, 2028, Dr. Sarah Gamble.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved in second and is now before us.
board functions in general and especially without any consultation with the town, and that the board should have sought a better solution. District 12 voted to abstain because she believed that Dr. Gamble did not take a lead on the decision to repeal the ordinance.
Thank you. Bob McKnight, Chairman of our Appointments Committee.
Dr. Gamble's interview echoed that very closely of Mrs. O'Keefe. She explained her reasoning for the vote on the noise ordinance, offered her resume and qualifications, which were very impressed by our committee. However, Sarah Gamble was, Dr. Gamble was not approved with a vote of 1-8-3.
Thank you. All right, we're going to now open it up to the speaker sign-up sheet. Lauren Rabin, to be followed by Erin Leonard of District 12.
Hi, again, I didn't do a good job of reading my notes last time, so I'm going to read them this time. So when we interviewed Sarah, she talked about all of her work during COVID, especially with the vaccines, developing the protocols for the contact tracing, and that dealt with thousands of people and very proud of how it was handled. She's developed the Department of Health Manual. She was part of the Medical Reserve Corps. She is the only practicing physician on the Health Department, oversees the clinical and individual programs, and we have one of the greatest programs in the state of Connecticut. She does the procedures for the blood draws, she picks the vaccines that will be implemented, and we cannot get and keep our license with the state without her signature. So for those reasons, and again, as I expressed with Lauren O'Keefe, looking at her whole body of work and how she's served the community, voted to renominate her, and I hope that you will reappoint her.
Thank you. Erin Leonard, to be followed by Fred Camillo.
Ladies and gentlemen, the issue before the RTM is not whether Dr. Gamble is a good person. I'm sure that she is. It's not whether she provides good service to her patients. That is not the issue here. The issue before the RTM is our, is she a good candidate to be on the Board of Health? And I'm afraid the answer there is no. There is a reason for that. We've heard much about this volunteer work. Everyone in this room is a volunteer. If you are being compensated, I'm sure the Ethics Committee would like to have a word with you. Many of us serve on multiple committees, in fact. Volunteerism is great. I'm glad that these individuals are so engaged, but so are we, and we are engaged in representing the people of the town of Greenwich. We've heard multiple times this referred to as controversial. It was not controversial. The support shown by the public through the RTM's website was overwhelmingly in favor, and the vote when it came before the RTM was again nearly unanimous, 204 in favor. When these individuals were nominated from the selectman's office, it was not unanimous. Now, that is not unheard of, but it is somewhat unusual. When they appeared before the committees, they failed before those committees, before Health and Human Services and before appointments. Make no mistake, we are involved in a political endeavor, and by which I do not mean parties, but I mean that what we do, the decisions we make, the votes we take are recorded, and there are consequences for those decisions. Hopefully, we make those choices carefully, we make those choices when we are informed, but we serve the public, as do the members of the Board of Health or any of the other boards that we vote on. And they have failed in that duty. They unilaterally made the decision to strike down the law that gave us home rule and control over the noise ordinance. This was not done in coordination with the legal department. This was not done in coordination with the RTM. They could have taken a stand if that's what they truly felt, I suppose, and refused to enforce it or something along those lines. But Dr. Gamble did not oppose this move by the Director of the Board of Health. She did not abstain. She went along with. So the decision from the Board of Health was unanimous. And the fact that we, this body, were able to come together and fix that is not to their credit, it is to our credit. There was no plan when they did that. They had no idea what the consequences would be, but that gave them no pause. And it's for those reasons I speak to you tonight, and I say that these decisions have to have consequences, as they do for all of us every two years. Well, this is the same situation. Making these types of rash decisions cannot be ignored with a reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Camillo, to be followed by Janet Stone-McWiggin.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. As the lone physician on the Board of Health, as you've heard, Dr. Gamble is also the medical advisor and the physician of record to the department. She's also the advisor to the Director of Health. She also approves and signs all the standing orders to the Division of Family Health to give out the free immunizations. She is absolutely vital to the operation of the Department of Health and the clinics that they run. She also has a legion of fans here, and I respectfully disagree with the last speaker. I think everyone of us here, if you've been a legislator, and I have here in town and in the state, you cast sometimes thousands of votes. I did not agree with that vote, and I was pretty vocal about it. But I don't think anybody in here would like to be judged on one vote, your worst vote, or even your best vote. You'd rather be judged, I think, on the totality of your record. And I think the totality of our record is overwhelmingly suggests that she should be renominated to another term on the Board of Health. She's been a true treasure to that board and that department. One vote, you know, aside, again, I think she's been terrific, and I think she, the calls that we've gotten and just the talk around town shows you just how critical and vital she has been these last few years. So I respectfully urge that you approve her reappointment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Janet Stone-McWiggin, to be followed by Karen Faselyotis.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and my remarks regarding the reappointment of Dr. Gamble are the same as the remarks I made for Ms. O'Keefe, so in respect to everyone's time, I will not repeat them now. Thank you very much.
Karen Faselyotis, to be followed by Caroline Basely.
I ask that you vote yes to reappoint Dr. Sarah Gamble to the Board of Health. Once again, I'm Dr. Karen Faselyotis, and I'm speaking as an individual. In my request to you to vote yes for Dr. Sarah Gamble, I would ask that you consider the reasons I spoke in favor for your vote for Lauren O'Keefe. My comments from Ms. O'Keefe hold true here for Dr. Gamble. But I also have to say, when it comes right down to it, the only reason that you are debating this tonight is that Dr. Gamble did not vote to endorse the gas leaf blower ban, but instead voted to reject the noise ordinance on which it was based. It seems as though individuals opposing her reappointment are upset with how the Board of Health decided to reject the ordinance, an ordinance that was under their jurisdiction, not the town's. So while you may disagree with the method, I have to ask again, what harm did that repeal actually do? To put it in the words of the Board of Health's chair, if the Board of Health removes the ordinance from the Board of Health's purview, including its future supervision, fine impositions for violations, and the granting of variance, that will allow the RTM to avoid conflicts and give the RTM a clear and unencumbered pathway to crafting its own RTM-governed noise ordinance. And that is what ultimately happened. By repealing the ordinance, the Board of Health gave the RTM the power to craft an ordinance that contained provisions that a citizens group wanted and the RTM ultimately agreed with. I also must speak again at how this body considers individual reappointments to boards and commissions. Personal attacks and vitriol, and I can only label them attacks and vitriol, when the exchange brings a nominated volunteer to tears by members of this body and the public on this and any other nominee are completely unwarranted and cast a chilling effect on anyone seeking to volunteer countless hours on behalf of the town. This must stop. Questions can and should be asked in a respectful manner, and your decision based on their responses, which is the RTM I grew up with and once served, not the one that it appears to have become. I will end by stating that Dr. Gamble is a respected doctor, has devoted countless of volunteer hours to our town. As the sole medical doctor on the board, she also serves as the doctor who assures that there are standing orders for the Health Department. The service, I've been told, if you do not approve her tonight, will cost us $20,000 or more if she's not renominated. Dr. Gamble deserves her vote to be reappointed on this board, despite what the naysayers say. Please vote yes for this appointment. Our town will be better off for having her on the Board of Health.
I'm sorry, Ms. Faselyotis, could you clarify where there's a $20,000 cost involved with this?
This is, we would have to hire a doctor to provide the service that she now provides.
Okay, you understand, though, that members serve until they are replaced?
Correct, but eventually, if, you know, again, she could decide to step down and not, and not serve, you know, again, we would have to hire somebody.
Okay, but that, that's speculative at that point. I agree. Okay. Caroline Basely, to be followed by Michael Goldstein.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Yes, I'm here to speak on behalf of Dr. Sarah Gamble, who, who's on the board, whom the Board of Select nominated for the appointment as a regular member of the Board of Health. It is important to understand as the role of physician as the Board of Health, Dr. Gamble serves as the physician of record for the Department of Health and medical advisor to not only the Division of Family Health, but also to the Office of Special Clinical Services, which is the section that does HIV and STD, and of course, our laboratory. Dr. Gamble approves and signs their standing orders, as Selectman Camillo has stated, for family health nurses to administer free immunizations through the Connecticut Vaccinating for Children's Program to children from birth through 18 years of age. These orders provide for the administration of thousands of doses of flu, pneumonia, COVID-19, RSV shingles, and other vaccines for children and adults in clinics at town hall in the community, at the senior congregant living residents all over town, all schools, and in the towns of the frail, and in the homes of the frail elderly. As a medical director, a requirement for the clinical licensure by the Department of Public Health, Dr. Gamble reviews the medical protocols and policies for not only the well-child home and clinic visits and school physicals, but the laboratory-administered amenia and blood-led tests required for physicals, and the WIC program, a food supplement program that provides formula, pre-formula, milk, food, and nutrition education for young children, expected mothers, and breastfeeding mothers. And of course, we have the HIV/STT program, which is a free testing program and counseling program. Our public health nurses are only able to provide their nursing programs in the community, especially to the homebound and most needy in the community because of the standing orders. Dr. Gamble is readily available to the Director of Health, which is myself, for consultation on program activities and medical issues that arise in Greenwich. Additionally, she provides guidance to the Director of Family Health, who is an APRN on both clinical and nursing operations. For example, she reviewed and updated 40 pages of the infection control policy, which includes the bloodborne pathogen exposure control plan that outlines policies and procedures in compliance with OSHA bloodborne pathogens and our biomedical waste disposal program that is required for the town. Dr. Gamble provides consultation on communicable disease issues in the community, especially during times of rising cases and outbreaks. She reviews our TB-controlled tuberculosis control program procedures plan under the public health monitors latent, under the, one of our public health nurses, which monitors latent and active TB cases in the community. During the height of the COVID pandemic, when the department reached out, Dr. Gamble provided free testing and medical evaluations to the most vulnerable and at-risk sick residents of Greenwich. Dr. Gamble is crucial and a vital member of the Board of Health, who has provided her commitment to the community of Greenwich through years of volunteer hours in her medical practice. Her services as medical advisor and doctor of the department's doctor of record are vital to the ongoing operations and services of the Greenwich Department of Health. We have three licensed clinics that need a doctor of record. I encourage you strongly to approve the Board of Selectman nomination of Dr. Sarah Gamble for ongoing service within the Department of Health.
Thank you. Michael Goldstein, to be followed by Donna Gaudio-Sazil.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Dr. Gamble. I'm Dr. Michael Goldstein, both a physician and a former Medical Society president, RTM member for District 10, the member of the Health and Human Services Committee who voted in favor of Dr. Campbell. Well, as I stated before, I did not agree with the way the Board of Health handled the noise ordinance, the issue, but the issue was fortunately quickly resolved by us, the RTM, who aggressively and promptly passed a new ordinance by a strong majority vote. The candidate has performed her duties with the public health service, including the pandemic, as the only physician member of the board. The amount of work that she's doing for this, this town is extensive and is probably greatly underappreciated. I can also go on to say that as a former Medical Society president, I know firsthand that physicians do a great job as physicians, but the overwhelming majority of them are unskilled when it comes to dealing with political issues. From what I understand, and what I've been able to learn, this applies to Dr. Gamble. I think the Board of Health members should be judged by regard regarding reappointment with how well they serve the town, regarding their mission of the Board of Health, not how they voted on a single issue that was quickly resolved. I think it would be very short-sighted to remove somebody who's, who's doing such extensive work for the town. And as I said previously, there are potential unintended consequences, because the message that you would be sending to the rest of the board members is that they will not be reappointed. And this certainly will, in the minimum, demoralize them, and there's always a possibility, as I stated before, that people could resign because of this. And I think that neither of these possibilities are good for the town. I think we need stability, especially in health, and we never know when the next health crisis is going to come. This is supposed to be an apolitical body, and yet for many, this is a political decision, which I disagree with. District 10 voted overwhelmingly to support Dr. Gamble's nomination, and I'm asking you to do the same. Thank you.
Donna Gaudio-Sazil, to be followed by Jerry Anderson.
Okay, I pretty much said the body of work that she has, that they have covered in the years that they have been on the board. I think Caroline Basely clearly stated how important she is and everything she brings to it, but yet, once again, we are narrow-sighted. We're looking at one component that a vote came, whether you agree with it or not agree with it. You're basing your vote tonight on that one little piece and not on all the clinical work, all the policies and procedures. And I just want to comment, one of the previous speakers spoke that we all are volunteers here, but Dr. Gamble's license is on the line when she volunteers. Just remember that. Please support her.
Jerry Anderson, to be followed by Tom Agresta, and to be followed by our final speaker, Sarah Gamble.
Good evening. I'll make this short, because I know it's been a long night already. I'm speaking in favor of the renomination of Dr. Gamble to the Board of Health. First, I need to tell you that Dr. Gamble is my doctor.
crisis is going to come. This is supposed to be an apolitical body, and yet for many, this is a political decision, which I disagree with. District 10 voted overwhelmingly to support Dr. Gamble's nomination, and I'm asking you to do the same. Thank you.
Donna Gaudio-Sazil to be followed by Jerry Anderson.
Okay, I pretty much said the body of work that she has, that they have covered in the years that they have been on the board. I think Carolyn Basely clearly stated how important she is and everything she brings to it, yet, once again, we are narrow sighted. We're looking at one component that a vote came, whether you agree with it or not agree with it, you're basing your vote tonight on that one little piece and not on all the clinical work, all the policies and procedures. And I just want to comment, one of the previous speakers spoke that we all are volunteers here, but Dr. Gamble's license is on the line when she volunteers. Just remember that. Please support her.
Jerry Anderson to be followed by Tom Agresta, to be followed by our final speaker, Sarah Gamble.
Good evening. I'll make this short, because I know it's been a long night already. I'm speaking in favor of the renomination of Dr. Gamble to the Board of Health. First, I need to tell you that Dr. Gamble is my doctor. There's been no issue. It's been stated over and over, her devotion to the board and her medical decisions and what she does for the town. So it seems that her only sin is that she's politically inexperienced in working for a board. She didn't understand the importance of consulting with, for Selectman, the RTM, and other interested parties on controversial issues. This failing, I think, has been very clearly communicated to her by the Appointments Committee and the Health and Human Services Committees. So I hope that you will overlook her failure to consult with these committees, because it's clear that she's not going to make this mistake again. So as a result, Dr. Gamble seems like an ideal candidate. She's medically competent, devoted to her work on the board, and now politically experienced. I hope you will vote to reappoint her to the board.
Tom Agresta to be followed by Sarah Gamble.
So several meetings ago, we had the vote for the Quiet Yards piece come up. We were inundated in that submittal forms with many people in favor for it. And I want to tell you a story about a member of our district, District 12. I think this person was on the fence, but it was stated by this person that the public overwhelmingly wanted this passed, and that turned the tide, at least for people in our district. So yesterday and today, I think I read over 100 forms in that system, all in, all in favor but four for Dr. Gamble. I think the public or our fellow neighbors who are not here tonight have spoken. It's, you know, let's do the math, 80, is it 96 to 4% in favor? We should take a cue from them and renominate this person. Let's do the right thing, step up and show the compassion and kindness, because it's not right when we vilify people or throw away people. We should keep people who are good. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Sarah Gamble.
I'm Dr. Sarah Gamble. I am an internal medicine physician, board certified, and a fellow of the American College of Physicians. First, let me just start by saying I'm usually much better one-on-one in a small exam room, so my voice may be a lot of, a little shaky, but what I want to communicate to you all tonight is, well, we said a lot about you are volunteers. I'm a volunteer. I'd like to share with you why I'm the best man for the job, really. Currently, I serve as vice chairman for the Board of Health. I grew up in this town. I built my business in this town. I'm choosing to raise my seven-year-old daughter in this town. This town has a part of me, and my family understands that they don't have the all of me. I'm the best person for this job because I love what I do and I love giving it to people in need. I was raised to be radically generous. I grew up here, five of my siblings did, you give to people in need. My most important job on the Board of Health is ensuring that there are no health disparities in this town. We are a really diverse town. We cannot let people, we cannot let there be an unequal distribution of health care. The Department of Health programs, we are honestly some of the gold standard in the state, and it's my job to make sure that continues. I spent two months researching which pneumonia vaccine we should boost our elderly patients with. If you are my patient and you are faced with any diagnosis, I believe you. If you don't tell me you feel, I don't, I believe you. I believe in finding $60,000 to get our TIC program be able to check for anaplasma, ehrlichia, and babesia, and not just Lyme disease. Why? Because I believe the TIC diseases ruin lives. These are services I've provided to our town. These are services I would like to continue to provide to our town. Yes, I have a lot of volunteer experience and a lot of it, you know, for the town directly stepped up during the COVID pandemic. I took my civil oath of liberty in February of 2020. And by that oath, I stated that despite the personal risk to me, that I would be available to Greenwich residents, no matter what happened, whatever emergency, natural or man-made, I would be here for them. That was not an oath I took lightly. And then again, becoming the appointed member on the Board of Health, it was a great time for me. It was, it was wonderful. I did all of this by Zoom. I didn't realize the intensity of being face-to-face with 230 people. But again, with my job, yes, I am the doctor of record for the Department of Health. Yes, I sign off on the procedures. Yes, I give the orders for the medications. Yes, I help direct our infection and policies and procedures so that if somebody is stuck by a needle, we know exactly how to take care of them and what is the best way to mitigate those problems that would have any fallout. I would like to continue providing my services to this town. Again, it is the town I grew up in. It is the town I was raised to be radically generous in giving to those in need too. It is the town I built my business, and still building it, it's a small medical practice, and it's where I'm choosing to raise my daughter. She's seven, and honestly, I, I just wanted to grow up in a town that does not separate people who deserve health care, really good health care, from people who might just be marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the speaker list for item 15. Craig, could you please prepare the, prepare the vote? Item 15, nomination of Sarah Gamble to the Board of Health. Okay. Item 15 is the nomination of Sarah Gamble to the Board of Health. If you're in favor of the nomination, you have a yes. If you're opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you please open the vote and start the clock? Okay, the vote's open. Okay, the vote on item 15, Dr. Gamble, is 125 in favor, 50 opposed, with 13 abstentions that item has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? There you go. Okay, we're now going to move on to item 25, which is the proposed RTM rule change. Kip Bergweger, if you could introduce that resolution, please. And it was referred to all of the committee chairs, so if you just want to start queuing up, I'll call you from over there.
This is a resolution proposed by the Legislative and Rules Committee. Resolved that the rules of the representative town meeting, Section Roman numeral 2, B4B, under resignation, filling a vacancy, be amended to update the process for filling district vacancies as follows, and is as it appears in the call.
Thank you. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us, and we will begin hearing the testimony from all of the committees. Don't all jump at once. Who's going to go first? Steve Rubin with the education report.
They went first because it's an easy one. We discussed the rule regarding the filling of the district vacancies. The current rules do not agree with common practice over the years related to the notification of running an open district seat midterm. The existing rule had required a majority of the members to sign a petition noticing the vacancy that would be given to the town clerk. This practice has not been used by the districts. Our vote on the item was 11-0-1. D11 abstained. Until the meeting, he was not aware of the D5 voting issues that prompted this rule change and wanted to understand it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Moss, Chairwoman of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works approved this item 12-0-0.
Thank you. Hillary Hirosh, Vice Chairwoman of Town Services Committee.
Town Services voted 12-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Allison Solar, Chairwoman of Health and Human Services Committee.
We actually combined items 24 and 25, and it was unanimous consent, 11-0-0, District 11 absent.
Catherine Lebalbo, Chairwoman of Parks and Rec Committee.
The Parks and Rec Committee voted 11-0-0 with District 7 absent. We felt this rule brought practice in line with the language. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Quigley, Chairman of the Public Works Committee. Land use, sorry, land use.
They sound very similar. It's okay. Land use voted 12-0-0.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Finance voted 12-0-0.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee and the sponsor of the motion.
Naturally, we proposed this, and now we can't just go 12-0-0 because we have a chance, an issue. At our meeting, Colleen Jenkins from District 6 described a recent issue in her district where a member resigned by email but was told by the town clerk's office that a letter with a wet ink signature was required for the resignation to be valued, to be valid. This wet ink signature requirement of the town clerk made it difficult for District 6 to meet the notice requirements for filling a vacancy in time to elect a new member at its June meeting. It was suggested amending the rules to specify that a wet ink, wet ink signature is required for resignation. However, that was not in the other laws and rules, and L and R members speculated as to why a wet ink signature would be required and required as to whether the town charter language on this issue, which just says a written resignation must be filed. So ultimately, we decided that District 6 would contact the town clerk and find out how the, the process works. And in the meantime, we want to be sure that we do not waive a second read rule, because we have an extensive further amendment to the document in its current form. So we voted 10-0-0 on legal order in its current form and 8-0-2 on the merits, but we're waiting to hear the additional changes from District 6.
Thank you. Lisa, is that you? Transportation? Yeah, Lisa Edmondson, Transportation Committee Vice Chair.
Transportation voted 11-0-0 with D2 absent.
Thank you. Bob McKnight, Appointments Committee, and Colleen Jenkins will give the report for District 6 as final.
Our vote 12-0-0.
Okay. Morgan Evans is going to give a report for District 6. We're just giving a report now. We're not introducing the resolution yet. We will, or the amendment, yeah, we will in a second.
D6 voted 11-0-0 in favor.
Okay, okay. All right. So now we are going to take up the District 6 motion to amend. Morgan Evans, member of District 6, also on our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Back. As Kip stated, there was some recent friction between a town clerk and a departing D6 member who attempted to resign via email. Item 25 on the call is a, well, we know what this is, but anyway, I was designated by L and R to speak with the town clerk about this. So I spoke with Jacqueline Budkin.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Can you just read the?
Text?
Well, we'll do a motion to amend. If you just read the text, like, just to give a summary, just say a motion to amend, whatever paragraph, we'll get it before us, and then you can do the whole report.
Okay, a motion to amend item 25.
Yep, it's, I forget what paragraph you're in, right? Let's just.
2B4B.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that item coming on behalf of a, a district does not require a second. It's now before us. Now you can do your whole discussion on it.
Apologies for that confusion.
Sorry.
So Jackie informed me that the town clerk prefers a wet ink signature for certain types of official town business like this. As you all remember, we had to collect wet ink signatures for our petitions to run for RTM. And we discussed Section 171A of the Town Charter, which provides that a representative town meeting member may resign by filing a written resignation with the town clerk. Such resignation shall take effect on the date of such filing. Although written resignation could be interpreted to include emails, the clerk's office, again, stated that they prefer a wet ink signature hard copy to be delivered either in person or by mail. For example, an RTM member could email the clerk notice of their resignation, but the clerk would then request a printout of that email just signed and delivered to them, and they would accept that as resignation. They use, the town clerk uses the terms filed and received fairly interchangeably as the word filing in, in the Town Charter, but the key element for all these terms is that the town clerk doesn't consider them received or filed until they have date and timestamp a wet ink signature, original hard copy. So we at District 6 proposed a amendment to the language of item 25, RTM rules, Section 2B4B, as follows. Any vacancy in the full number of RTM members from any district, whether arising from a failure of the registered voters thereof to elect or from any other cause, may be filled by the remaining members of said district from among the registered voters thereof. A member's resignation shall be effective upon filing with the town clerk a wet ink signature hard copy of the member's written resignation. Upon such filing, notice of any vacancy shall promptly be given by the town clerk to the remaining members from the district in which the vacancy exists.
Thank you. Okay, we do have. Okay, we do have two people that have signed up to debate this. Kimberly Blank of District 7. There you are.
Hi, good evening. Kim Blank from District 7. District 6's motion attempts to do two separate things. First, it gets rid of the requirement for a petition to fill a vacancy, and this part makes total sense to me. I think we should adopt it. My issue is with the second part, which specifies that in order for a member to resign, they need to file a wet ink signature with the clerk. This means a hard copy letter, and this does not make sense to me. I don't understand why we wouldn't accept a resignation via email. It doesn't make sense to put an extra burden on someone, in this case, the person resigning, who has no incentive to follow through with that burden. If for some reason they can't or simply don't feel like going to the extra trouble of mailing a letter in, it's no skin off their teeth that their resignation is not official. They simply don't show up to meetings and they move on. But on the other hand, the district suffers because they can't fill the vacancy until a letter's received. In changing this rule, we should make it easier rather than harder for a person to communicate their resignation. The rule should clarify that a resignation is official when filed either by wet ink signature or by email communication. Some may say that a wet ink signature is important to prevent fraud, but I think that's really a very remote concern. In the bizarre situation where someone tried to fraudulently resign on behalf of someone else, it would quickly be discovered and nullified. For example, if someone sent a false email to the clerk's office telling them that I resigned, I expect I'd get a note from my district leader saying, hey, I see you resigned. Good luck with your future endeavors. And I'd say, what are you talking about? In fact, I'd probably use an expletive. And then the matter would be cleared up. Moreover, there's no reason to think that someone couldn't just do the same thing by falsifying a signature on a letter. I doubt that the clerk's office is in a good position to verify each wet ink signature as it comes in. If we're going to make a change to clean up this rule, that we should do it in a way that benefits the RTM by making it easier to fill vacancies quickly. Accepting both email and wet ink resignations is the best way to do this. So in short, I don't support this amendment as written, but I would support it if it were changed to clarify that resignations can also be filed via email. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Zerilli? Carol Zerilli? Okay. Okay, that concludes those folks who have signed up to debate on the District 6 motion to amend item 25. We will take a vote on that motion to amend. Okay. This is the District 6 motion to amend item 25. If you are in favor of the language that explains that you would need a wet signature, and I'm just gonna read to you the one sentence that it's added, which is, "A member's resignation shall be effective upon filing with the town clerk a wet ink signature hard copy of the member's written resignation." Okay, so that's the addition. And then, "Upon such filing, notice of the vacancy shall promptly be given to the town clerk of, to the remaining members from the district in which the vacancy exists." If you are in favor of that, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you please open the window? Okay, you have two minutes on the clock. Okay, so I have the vote on the District 6 motion to amend item 25. Those in favor, 71, opposed 90, abstaining 5. That motion has failed. Okay, so where does this leave us? We are back to the item as it appears on the call. It does require a second read. I don't know if there's any appetite, if anyone's going to offer a motion to suspend the rules, take it up on a first read and dispense with it this evening, or if we're just gonna carry it over into September. I will ask if anyone wants to. Mr. Carter? Okay, is there a second? Okay. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and does require a 2/3s majority to pass. So Craig, can you please prepare the vote? Which is motion to suspend the second read rule for item 25. Okay, we're just waiting. Okay. So this is the motion to suspend the second read rule for item 25. If you are in favor of suspending the rule, which will allow you to potentially take a dispositive vote on the item, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. It does require a 2/3s majority to pass. Craig, you wanna start the timer? Okay, the vote's open. You may cast your vote. Okay, I have the vote on the motion to suspend the rules to allow us to consider item 25 on its first read. Those in favor, 114, opposed 40, abstaining 3. That motion has carried, which allows, Craig, can you please show the vote? Which allows us to consider it. There you go. Okay. So let me just see if anyone has signed up on item 25 in general. I don't think there was, but I just want to make sure. It's a very long thing here that we use. No one has signed up. Okay, so that allows us to take a dispositive vote on item 25. Yes. Sure, why not? Let's try it. What can go wrong at 10:45? Okay.
I'm gonna offer a motion to amend the item to include the words, after, upon receipt of a member's resignation, add the words by electronic communication or wet ink signature, just to clarify that either is an acceptable form of communication of the resignation to the clerk's office.
Okay.
So it says electronic communication. That, well, I don't know if you can text the clerk's office, but if they create a way that you can, then that's an electronic communication.
Okay, so Ms. Blank, let me just, so we are now back, because the District 6 motion did not pass, we are back to the item as it appears on the call. So if you're following the bouncing ball, it would be upon the new language's receipt of a member's resignation, and then you would add by electronic communication or wet ink signature after that.
Correct.
Okay. Does everybody understand what's being added? Okay. Okay. Is there? Okay, okay. Any debate on that? Okay. So Craig, we are going to create, oh. I'm sorry, what? Okay, well, then come to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, RTM. I asked you guys to essentially deny this amendment based on the fact that if you're in financial services, you know that this is all spoofing in terms of any type of documentation, excuse me, documentation. So with that being said, we should not accept electronic communications other than just wet documents.
Okay. Hang on. Ms. Blank, your impromptu thing has generated. It's okay. Kip Berg, why doesn't everybody line up? Because I don't know who's there. Kip Bergweger, Steve Meskers, who else is coming up? Popping up out of the woodwork. Okay. Kip Bergweger.
Madam Moderator, members of the RTM, the reason we proposed this change, or District 6 proposed this change, was because the town clerk would not accept an email when it's not signed. I'd like to ask, have the moderator ask the town clerk whether this is going to be acceptable, because otherwise, putting this in is not going to be effective.
That's a fair question. Could somebody, Ms. Budkins, could you answer for us if an email signature or a resignation by email would be accepted, or is there a requirement for wet signature? And why don't you come to the podium, because we won't be able to hear you?
So since I've been town clerk, it's been the practice that when any elected official resigns from their position, we get it in a hard copy wet ink signature resignation letter. We have not accepted any emails, to my knowledge. Can you confirm? Okay. So that's the practice we've been following. It's not preferred. It's the practice. Elected officials need it in writing with their signature for it to be official. But it's the will of this body. If you all vote and say that emails are also acceptable, we will follow that. But you know what happens if a person emails and then emails us again and says, you know, I changed my mind? I mean, just are just things we have to think about. But again, whatever the will of the body is, we will follow.
Okay. Mr. Bergweger, does that answer your question sufficiently? Okay, okay. Thank you, Ms. Budkins. Stephen Meskers?
Madam Moderator, without confusing the issue further, it would seem that if we put upon the clerk a due diligence to verify the email by, I don't know, by discretion, or I think we have a Zoom account, and get a physical communication, some video recording, some way to ascertain that the email is legitimate, I would think that would make sense. I mean, I understand the idea of spoofing on email. I don't know if there should be a follow-up check versus the wet signature. I don't know if, I'm not sure whether the state, and I don't know if we've done any research to see whether this would be adequate with the state. So.
Okay.
Moving beyond a wet signature, I don't know if we need further research to go past the wet signature. That would be my only concern.
Okay. Is that, anyone else want to debate this issue? Or are we ready to vote on it? I think you've heard the testimony as best you could provide from the town clerk. You've heard the amendment, and the amendment is to add, after, upon receipt of a member's resignation, by electronic communication or wet ink signature. Okay? We okay with that? Because we're gonna create a vote, and you can decide what you want to do. Okay?
Perfect. Can we get Barbara or Amos weigh in?
Okay. Barbara Schellenberg, our town attorney.
This is not something we've researched in terms of state requirements, but we're not aware of a requirement for a wet ink signature. And if the charter says in writing, I don't believe that requires, you know, I think an email would certainly suffice to satisfy that particular requirement.
Okay.
But again, we would have to research further, as Mr. Mesker brought up, the possibility of some state requirement. Again, we're not aware.
Okay. Okay. Does that, I'm not sure who asked that question. That answers that question. Are we ready to vote on this amendment offered? I'm sorry? Yes, Mr. Rubin? No, we are taking this amendment up. You can amend something after that. Okay. Is Glenn Kanter asking to be recognized? Yeah, go ahead. You gotta come to the podium, though.
Glenn Kanter, Legislative and Rules. I'm just trying to clarify. Attorney Schellenberg wasn't at Legislative and Rules, but Attorney Ahmad was there. And she did pull out the statute, and she said that state law only requires that when a member of the legislative body wants to resign, they'll submit it in writing. So she pointed that out. So I suggested that our charter actually came from the state statute, but I just wanted to add that, because Attorney Schellenberg wasn't there, though.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does that take care of all the questions related to this? And we're gonna proceed to a vote on the Blank motion to amend item 25. Okay? Craig, you'll need to create something that says Blank motion to create, to amend. Craig, you'll need to create something that says blank motion to create, to amend... Oh, look at you. All right, just require... I know. It just requires a majority vote. If you are in favor of the blank motion to amend item 25, which includes the new language by electronic communication or wet ink signature, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Can you open the... The clock? Does everyone cast their vote that wants to cast their vote on this item? Okay, I have the results of the blank motion. Those in favor, 112, opposed 39, abstaining 5. The blank motion has carried. So now, because we did pass the motion to suspend the rules so that we can take a dispositive vote on this item, that is going to be as amended. So Craig, we will need to add as amended to the voting window. I'll give you a second to fix that before we open it. Okay? So this is going to be a vote. Let me know when you're ready with your new slide. You're set. Okay. So this is going to be a vote on item 25 as amended to include the language that Ms. Blank's resolution, we just adopted. If you are in favor of item 25 as amended, you would vote yes. If you were opposed, you would vote no. Craig, can you open the... Or can you display the thing? There we go. RTM rule change, section, is that 2 or 3? I can't see back here. B4B, resignation, filling the vacancy as amended. Okay, if you're in favor, as amended, you would vote yes. If you're opposed, you would Okay, I have the result on item 25 as amended. Those in favor, 142, opposed 13, abstaining 4. That item has carried. That now brings us to item 26, which is another... Oh, Craig, can you show the vote? Another proposed RTM rule change. Mr. Bergweger, are you here to read that into the record,
Item 26, requested by Legislative and Rules Committee, resolved. Let the rules of the representative town meeting, section Roman numeral 3A, be amended to require that candidates for RTM moderator and moderator pro tempore file a notice of candidacy with the town clerk for inclusion in the call of the January organization meeting following a municipal election as follows, and is as it appears in the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Again, this was an item that was referred to all committees, so if everybody can just sort of line up and give your committee report. Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Legislative and Rules Committee met last Monday. Let's see. Lucy von Brockel from District 4, who had worked, put this together, described feedback from members she had received, largely pertaining to the inability to nominate candidates from the floor. She noted that if this amendment is adopted, the RTM could entertain a motion at an organization meeting to waive the rules and accept nominations from the floor, but that would require 2/3's vote. She cited that her goal in initiating the motion to amend the rules was to ensure that members have the opportunity to vet candidates for important offices before they vote, and that it was impossible to address every possible scenario that could occur under the current or amended rules. It would be preferable to have a requirement to which we can make exceptions rather than continue a cumbersome process which has resulted from the same outcome. Jenny Koebe, alternate from District 8, presented extensive research in support of her concerns about the proposed amendments. She described the amendments as banning nominations from the floor and felt there was no impetus for making this change. There's nothing bad has occurred under the current rules. She noted that her review of numerous RTMs in Connecticut and Massachusetts did not find any that prohibit nominations from the floor. She pointed to Darian's process, which involves a nominating committee for the moderator position, but it states explicitly that nominations from the floor are accepted. The... Also, some question as to whether a motion to suspend the rules would be in legal order. The commission, the committee discussed a number of different scenarios that support opinions both in favor of and against the amendment. And Beth Gilibery from District 7 did not feel there was any reason to change a process that has been working and expressed concern that if a candidate wasn't supported by the majority and was the only candidate to declare, a 2/3's majority was a high bar to meet. Others described past elections for the moderator where there's unexpected nomination from the floor. They felt supported the amendment's goal to allow members adequate time to vet candidates. I would, there, at this point, there are a number of concerns about this amendment and some various ways to approach it. So I would, at this point, urge you not to waive the second reading rule, because this is the perfect time to have a second reading. And then we, Ms. von Brockel did identify an amendment that had been made to the language which was incorrect, and I'll make a motion to correct that at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I was interpreting that more as a Scrivener's error, because I think it was inadvertently, yeah.
That's right, it's a Scrivener's error.
Okay. Catherine Lebalbo, Parks and Recreation Committee.
Thank you, Moderator. The Park and Rec Committee took this up Tuesday evening. This item actually was moderated by our vice chair, Liz Eckert. The committee discussed the information provided by former moderator Tom Byrne. And they, there was some discussion around how a resume and notification for a role that has such a intricate part, an integral part of this body, understanding more about the leadership that would be elected, was something that seemed supportive of. There was concern for limiting or discouraging a motion from the floor. Ultimately, though, there was a discussion around considering the role itself and the preparation that moderators and moderator pro temps have to take in preparation for leading the body, and that asking something that this rule would be amended to create would not be a large burden. So the vote was 10-1-0, with District 7 absent.
Thank you. James Waters, Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
VOC voted 8-3-1 to approve the item as drafted. We did not consider the amendment. We'll hear from District 6. The three members voting against cited their belief this rule change is unnecessary and that nomination of members from the floor should continue. The eight in favor noted the rule change increases transparency of the nominating process for the most important positions in the RTM, and particularly benefits new RTM members who may not be familiar with the backgrounds and qualifications of potential candidates.
Thank you. Dan Quigley, Chairman of our Land Use Committee. You get the record. Bob McKnight, Chairman of our Appointments Committee.
Our discussion revolved around necessity for this rule. Our vote, 4-7-1.
Thank you. Cheryl Moss, Chairman of Public Works.
Public Works voted 10-2-0. The no votes were because we are becoming an HOA with all these rules, and why not give people the opportunity?
Thank you. Allison Solar, Chairwoman of Health and Human Services.
We voted 10-1-0. District 10 voted no because it limits the democratic process. We were curious. We had Kip and Lucy von Brockel presenting and asked if there had been nominations for these positions from the floor in the past, and apparently there have been a number of them in fairly recent years. Two committee members expressed concern that this would stifle the broadest participation in elections, and another expressed concern that without this amendment, a brand-new member to the RTM who comes in January of a new term would not have time to research and know candidates who were nominated from the floor.
Thank you. Hillary Hirosh, Vice Chairman of Town Services.
Town Services voted in favor, 10-1-1. The one who opposed wanted easier nominations from the floor, not such a restrictive process.
Thank you. Greg Sorthian, Chairman of Finance Committee.
Finance voted 11-0-1. The abstention was the, wanted to think more about the implications of not allowing nominations from the floor.
Thank you. Liz Eckert, Transportation Committee, Vice Chairwoman.
Transportation voted 8-1-2 for some of the same reasons that have been mentioned earlier, that being limiting the number of candidates and allowing for nominations from the floor.
Thank you. Steve Rubin, Education Chair. And finally, it'll be followed by Colleen Jenkins, District 6 Chair.
The Education Committee discussed the rule change as proposed by LNR, and there was concern related to unintended consequences. While the committee was supportive of the intention of the rule change, questions arose concerning three potential scenarios. Number one, a single person is nominated for an office. The nominee changes their mind about serving or withdraws or moves out of Greenwich, or is otherwise unable or unwilling to serve. They withdraw their name for consideration after the close of the January call, and no other person is eligible under the rules. Number two, a single person is nominated for an office. New information about the nominee comes to light after the close of the January call. For example, the nominee's call submission is erroneous, or the nominee is involved in a serious legal matter, calling their integrity into question. Again, there is no alternative person eligible for consideration under the rules. Number three, an individual loses in the race for moderator. As a result, they would now like to be considered for moderator pro tempore. How would this be achieved under new rules? In these three cases, under the proposed rule in item 26, no further nominations could be made from the floor at the January RTM meeting or otherwise without a 2/3's majority vote to suspend the RTM rules. The Education Committee would like these scenarios addressed or an explanation provided as to why addressing them isn't necessary or recommended. Because of these concerns, the committee voted to refer the item back to LNR for review. The vote was 9-2-1. The no votes, D4, D6, and the abstention, D3, felt that the LNR committee had sufficiently created the rule change and consequences, and did not feel the need to refer this back to the LNR. Madam Moderator, at the appropriate time, I'll make the motion to refer this back to LNR.
Thank you. Okay. Colleen Jenkins with the District 6 report, and then I'll recognize you, Mr. Rubin.
Coincidentally, our motion addresses your third point. So at the D6 district meeting, we made a motion to amend the rules, and it's actually in section 5 to add a last sentence. Shall I read that sentence?
Sure, you can, you can read it, and then we'll...
A candidate for moderator that decided their, that declared their candidacy, candidacy following the procedure described above, and did not receive a majority vote, can be nominated from the floor as a candidate for moderator pro tempore.
Thank you. Okay. So the first motion that we're going to take up is the education motion to refer item 26 back to LNR. You want to offer that?
Sure. On behalf of the Education Committee, we'd like to make a motion to refer this item, number 26, back to LNR for their review.
Okay. That being offered on behalf of a That being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. There are two people that have signed up to speak. Lucy Von Brockel wanted to speak on this item, on the motion to refer. There she is over there.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Remind me never to draft rules changes again. So it's not really necessary to refer this back to LNR. We'll have a second read in September. The motion to refer seeks feedback on some hypothetical scenarios, which I can go through now. And if there are lingering questions, my contact information, along with the Chair of LNR's, is listed in the call, and you should take advantage of that. I'll start with this, well, I'll skip the one that Colleen covered, the third scenario is moot. The first scenario explores what would happen if there were no eligible candidates for moderator at the organization meeting. This is already addressed in the rules. I'll give you the most likely to least likely outcomes. The outgoing moderator serves until, quote, "an elector shall be elected and qualified." The second, if they can't or won't serve, the election for moderator would have to be postponed, but the election for moderator pro temp would not have to be postponed. That could go forward. And then the moderator pro temp could be filling in for the unelected moderator. If there were no eligible candidates for either role at the organization meeting, the body could elect a temporary moderator pro temp. And if we're so utterly dysfunctional that we cannot elect a temporary moderator pro temp, the town clerk would take over. This last scenario, the last scenario explores what would happen if we had a single candidate that lacked the support of the majority of candidates. The answer is that a motion could be made to suspend the rules and allow nominations from the floor. That would require a two-thirds vote. If that's objectionable to you, you can vote against the item or make a motion to amend it in September. But I have to point out that this last scenario could also occur under the current rules. We could easily have an unpopular candidate and no one willing to step up as an alternative. All an uncontested candidate needs to win in our current rules is a single vote, and we'd be stuck with an unpopular moderator. And then taking that a little further, if a challenger stepped up from the floor, we'd have a competition between an unpopular nominee and a reluctant nominee. We'd be electing the lesser of two evils. I could keep going and going and going with these scenarios, but I think you all want to go home. And I hope that the moderator will correct me if I've erred in any of these things. Good night. See you later.
Thank you. Actually, I stand corrected. Ms. Von Brockel was the only person who signed up on this. So unless there's any further debate on the education motion to refer Item 26 back to LNR... Oh, I thought, Mr. Burgweger, you were going to rise to object, going it to your own committee. We're going to open that vote. Okay. So education motion to refer Item 26 to LNR. If you're in favor of the item going back to LNR for further review and coming back, my guess is that it would most likely come back in October because we don't meet over the summer, and I think it's unlikely that they would hold a special meeting over the summer to address this. So, and, you know, in order to be ready for the September call, my guess is that a more reasonable timeframe would be October for them to do their work and research and come back to us. So the education motion to refer Item 26 to LNR, if you're in favor of that motion, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, can you open the vote? Okay. We have the vote on the motion to refer to LNR. LNR, you've just bought yourself this item. Those in favor, 85. Opposed, 63. Abstaining, 1. That motion has carried, so we look forward to your fine work on this coming back in October or thereafter. Okay. That effectively gets 26 off the board. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you show the vote, Craig? And now we are going to jump to, I think it's 37 that's next, but let me just make sure. Is it 37? Is that where we're going? Okay. The famous Transportation Safety Action Plan grant. Who is introducing that? Oh, Amy. I didn't, I'm looking over there for you. I didn't even realize you were...
I'm ready.
All right. You're ready to go. Amy Seibert, Commissioner of Public Works.
Thank you. Item 37 resolved that the sum of $500,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the following account to be determined and to be known as Transportation Safety Action Plan.
Thank you. May a member please move the resolution. The item has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this, beginning with James Waters, our Budget Overview Committee?
Okay. BOC voted 12-0-0 to approve this interim appropriation. Jim Michael, Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, presented it. BOC had discussed this in May in our meeting with the BET Budget Committee members. I think everyone's aware the BET removed this item during BET Decision Day and then approved it by a seven-to-five vote in May. Mr. Michael explained some background about the project, that it's going to look at all roadways, the study will look at all roadways, users, crash data, traffic volumes to determine safety action measures to recommend. I think we're all aware DPW has hosted six public forums for the community, which I know many of you have attended, and of the $500,000 cost, $100,000 will be funded by the town and $400,000 will be reimbursed by the Safe Streets for All grant from the federal government. Approval of this funding and completion of the studies required for the town to be able to access significant state and federal grant programs for implementation of recommendations. BOC members cited that they'd heard extensively from constituents on this important and as-of-yet-unmet need to improve road traffic and pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Moss, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Once again, James did a great job, and Public Works voted 11-0-1.
Thank you. Lisa Edmondson, Vice Chair of our Transportation Committee.
Transportation took up this item on Tuesday, June 4, and discussed many of the items mentioned earlier. In addition, we had at our meeting DPW representatives Gabriela Saracosta Kohe and Amy Seibert, and they reviewed the Safe Streets program. We had many questions regarding the results of this study as well as what sort of mandates there might be after completing this study. And it was clarified that this completion of this program simply opened the door that Greenwich would then be able to apply for further grants to make our streets safer for all modes of transportation. We voted 11-0-0 to approve, and D2 was absent.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Finance took up this measure, voted 11-0-1 to approve after discussions with Amy Seibert and Gabriela Saracosta.
Thank you very much. We have one person who has signed up, Mr. Meskers. Are you interested in speaking on this? No, Mr. Meskers is passing. Okay. Craig, would you please prepare the voting window? Item 37, which is the $500,000 interim appropriation. Okay. Item 37, $500,000 appropriation, Transportation Safety Action Plan. If you're in favor of the appropriation, you would vote yes. If you're opposed, you would vote no. Okay. We have the vote on Item 37. Those in favor, 121. Opposed, 16. Abstaining, 4. That item has carried. That brings us to Item 38, which is a $650,000 interim appropriation for police overtime. And I thank Chief Heavey for grinding it out here until almost the bitter end. Oh, I'm sorry. Can we put the vote up? There you go. All yours. Go ahead.
Madam Moderator, members of the RTM, yes, it is still evening. Resolved that the sum of $650,000 be and same is hereby appropriated for account Alpha 21751100, police overtime.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with James Waters of the Budget Overview Committee?
Don't worry, you're almost done hearing from me tonight. The BOC voted 12-0-0 to approve this interim appropriation. Deputy Chief Mark Sacarella from the Police Department attended our meeting, explaining that the interim is needed to fund projected overtime expenses through the end of the fiscal year. Deputy Chief Sacarella said the primary driver is 12 open positions at the Police Department, noting that the department had made changes to hiring and recruitment and expects to be fully staffed this coming fiscal year. Several of the new officers to the force are still completing training and expected to join the force in September. In this case, the interim will be funded by a general fund balance. BOC is hopeful the Police Department's well on its way to decreasing its reliance on overtime and interim appropriations. Yet, given the staffing circumstances here and the committee's strong support for our Police Department, BOC voted unanimously to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Zorthian, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Finance took this up on last Monday. We were visited by Chief Heavey, who had just gotten finished with a presidential visit in Greenwich. The chief described the needs for this additional funding, felt that the $650,000 request was the outside top number and that he hoped to give us back some of that money at year end. We voted 11-0-1 in favor. The one abstention was one of the members wished that the number was a little sharper. If we were going to get money back, maybe it should have been reflected in the request. But that's that.
Thank you. Hillary Hirosh, Vice Chair of the Town Services Committee.
Town Services voted 12-0-0 in favor. Just a couple of additions other than what you've heard. There are a number of officers retiring, and they do need to hire ahead of time, and the new officers can't patrol solo for very long periods of time because of that training. For example, there are 10 in the academy, five on long-term disability, four empty spots on dispatch. So every seat has to be filled, all shifts, and if someone's out on disability or retiring, overtime is needed. They don't think they'll need the whole 650, would rather have the appropriation come in versus be unprepared and lack the funding. And they constantly get sudden events, like recently, the president was in town. The management team is watching very carefully, including the Town Services Committees, and all felt very confident in this and want to support the Police Department. So again, 12-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Meskers, you are the only individual who signed up, but you're waving your hand. I will interpret that as a pass. Okay. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? Item Number 38, and I thank you, Chief Heavey, for waiting the whole evening for what is amounted to five minutes. Yeah. Okay.
Chief doesn't get overtime.
All right. Item 38 is a $650,000 appropriation for GPD overtime. If you are in favor, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you open the clock? Okay, you have two minutes. Okay, you have two minutes. Okay, I have the vote on item 38, which is the $650,000 in police overtime. Those in favor, 140. Opposed, zero, abstaining one. That item has carried. That now brings us to our penultimate item for the evening, item 39. Mr. Malillo, are you going to be introducing that for us? Oh, can you show the vote? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Andrew Malillo, Secretary for the Historic District Commission. Item 39 is resolved that Article 7 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Greenwich entitled Historic Properties be amended pursuant to Section 7-147P through 147Y of the General Statutes as follows. Property owned by Israel Putnam House Association, the following property known as 243 East Putnam Avenue, Greenwich, Connecticut, is hereby designated as an historic property pursuant to the provisions of the General Statute, Sections 1, 7, 147P through 1, 7, 147Y.
Thank you very much. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution. The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Dan Quigley of our Land Use Committee.
Land Use Committee discussed it and voted 11-01 to approve the item.
Great. Followed up by Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
On Legal Order and Merits, we voted 11-00.
Okay. Okay, now, don't get too excited. This is a proposed change to an ordinance, and as such, it is subject to a second read rule, barring a motion to suspend the second read rule and take a dispositive vote this evening. Is there anyone who is off? All right. It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and take this up on its first read. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and does require a two-thirds to pass. I'm, I don't even think there's two-thirds here. I was going to say if there was, we could try doing it by voice vote, but I think unfortunately, we're going to have to click away. Yeah. So, yes. Steve Rubin, as he always makes the motion to suspend the rules. He's my wingman. Have you not been following that? Come on. All right. So can you please open the vote for motion to suspend the rule for item number 39, second read rule? Okay, motion to suspend the second read rule for item 39. If you're in favor of this, you would vote yes. If you're opposed, no. It does require two-thirds to pass. You have two minutes on the clock. And I think in September, we may revisit lowering the two-minute bar to maybe something a little shorter. Okay, the motion to suspend the second read rule, so we can take a dispositive vote on this, is 125 in favor, seven opposed with zero abstentions. Craig, can you show the vote? Which now allows us to take a final vote on item 39. So Craig, can you just prepare that vote? Okay, item 39, Historic Property Designation for 243 East Putnam Avenue. If you are in favor of that change to the ordinance with that designation, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. We'll give you two minutes on the clock. Okay, Craig, could you close the vote, please? Okay, we have the vote on item 39. Those in favor, 126. Opposed, two, abstaining four. That item has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay, and here we are at the end. Yay. All right, Mr. Mason, item number 40 is now before us. Why don't you?
Good morning.
No, 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 no. I have 15 minutes to get us out before then, and it will happen. Okay? So chop, chop.
Good evening, everyone. Item 40 comes before you tonight, resolved at the representative town meeting and exercising its authority pursuant to the Connecticut General Statute 7-474B and for the fiscal '24 through '26 budget resolution hereby rejects the use of the funds necessary to implement the terms of the Greenwich Public Health Nurses, UPSU, Uniform Papa Sierra Echo Uniform United Public Service Employees. Be it further resolved, Representative Tomlin rejects any terms in such agreement which may be in conflict with the Town Charter, comma, Special Act, ordinance, rule, or regulations adopted by the municipal employer or its agents of the town.
Terrific. Thank you. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution. So moved. The resolution has been moved and seconded. We will start with Glenn Kaner, Vice Chair of Labor Contracts Committee.
Good evening. Glenn Kaner, Vice Chair, a co-Vice Chair of Labor Contracts. I'm here at the request of Josh Brown, Chair of Labor Contracts, who couldn't be here tonight and asked me to speak on item four. I know we only have 15 minutes to wrap up this meeting, so I'll keep this brief. On May 28, Labor Contracts met with Mike Mason, the Town Labor Negotiator, and Jonathan Budd, the Greenwich Public Schools Labor Negotiator, concerning item 40, a resolution to reject the use of town funds to implement the terms of Greenwich Public Health Nurses Union, UPSU, proposed successor three-year contract. Mike Mason explained that this is a very small bargaining unit, only 21 employees. However, it's an important set of employees per state law. Whenever schools are open, a nurse must be present. The town had several goals in connection with this proposed successor contract. Number one, the town wanted to modify the language regarding attendance of school nurses. Heretofore, the contract provided that even on snow days, nurses should come to work. Recently, the Board of Ed changed their policy on that, and we wanted to bring this contract in line with that. The successor contract provides that on snow days, nurses will not come into school. However, additional language was added. In all cases, in the event the school day is rescheduled by the BOE, employees shall be required to work the rescheduled day with pay. The second goal, a second goal of the town was that they wanted an increase in employee healthcare sharing. Currently, the employees pay 12% of healthcare. Under the successor agreement, the employee contribution will increase 1% per year. So in year one, it'll be 13%. In year two, it'll be 14%, and year three, it'll be 15%. The successor contract does provide for a 2.5 annual GWI, gross wage increase, during each of the three years of the successor agreement, which is in keeping with the average settlements across the state. It was noted that this is a very senior staff, all but one employee is at the top level. On the one hand, employee longevity and minimal turnover can be a good thing. On the other hand, when no one is leaving, it raises the question, is this overall employee employment package too generous? LCC concluded that we need to watch this situation. Notwithstanding, LCC voted zero in favor, five opposed to item 40 on the call. That is, LCC is rejecting the rejection of the contract. LCC is respectfully requesting that the RTM do the same and vote no on item 40. Thank you.
Thank you. James Waters, Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
Budget Overview Committee voted 1, 11, 0 to reject item 40, i.e. to accept the contract as negotiated. Mike Mason and Glenn Kaner attended our meeting. And I will try not to repeat things you've already heard. BOC heard that the negotiating team feels good about the increase in the healthcare contribution in the contract, beginning to bring it in line with others in town. BOC also heard that many of our school nurses are at the top of the pay scale, but that the contract is unlikely to achieve a better result if taken to arbitration. District 10 voted yes on this item because of the seniority of the employees. She said she understood in arbitration, the contract may come back with a higher cost, but felt the RTM should take a stand and push back. The 11 other members of BOC voted no, believing this was a good outcome for the town and stating the importance and requirement of having good school nurses at our public schools. Again, BOC voted 1, 11, 0 to reject the rejection. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Zorothy, and Chairman of our Finance Committee.
I'd like to thank the RTM for helping me get my steps in tonight. The Finance Committee heard from Mike Mason and Josh Brown about this contract. They were overall very positive about it. The only thing we, the one thing we heard that hasn't been mentioned is that there was a change in summer school staffing. Where in the past, the school where the sessions were being held, the nurse for that school would cover the session. Now it's going to be decided on seniority. Other than that, my report's the same as the others. Our vote was 0, 12, 0 to reject the rejection.
Thank you. Steve Rubin, Chair of our Education Committee.
Our vote was also 0, 12, 0 to reject the rejection. We heard from Mike Mason. We also heard from the Labor Contracts Committee Adam Leader. And pretty much everything that you've heard tonight from the other presenters is what we heard as well. Thank you.
Great. Okay, we have no speakers signed up for this item, so we're going to call for the vote. Just remember, it is worded to reject. Okay. So we're going to open the vote. Do not turn on your clickers while the last vote is live, you know, okay? So item 40 is reject the Greenwich Public Nurses Contract. If you are in favor of rejecting the contract, meaning sending it to arbitration, you would vote yes. If you do not want to reject the contract, you would vote no. Everybody clear what they're doing? Okay. Could you open the? There you go. You're all set. Okay, we're going to close the vote, and hopefully while you are turning in your clickers, they haven't changed anything. Okay, the vote on item forty, those in favor of rejecting the contract, one hundred and, I'm sorry, those in favor of rejecting the contract, seven, opposed to rejecting, a hundred and twenty-four, abstaining four, that motion has failed, so the contract goes through. I wish you all a wonderful summer. I'll see you in September. Get home safely, and thank you for bearing with us for this last long meeting before we adjourn. Have a good night.